Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Trustees Meeting of the State Bar. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Sharon, roll call.
Barahona?
Present.
Bonaventura?
Present.
Cisneros?
Here.
Good, not present. Gore?
Present.
Grande, not present. Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Present.
Joel?
Present.
Stevens, not present. Tony?
Present.
Trejo, not present. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Onto our next item, 6.21, Discussion Regarding State Bar Generative AI Use and Approval of the State Bar Generative AI. We are joined by George Cardona and Atlas. Good morning. All right, great. And Helen Peterson, thank you.
She should be joining. Hey, everybody. I will get started by sharing my screen. Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Helen Peterson. I lead our Office of Digital Transformation here at the State Bar. I'm joined by George Cardona of the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel to present on this item, the discussion regarding the State Bar generative AI use and request for approval of the State Bar generative AI framework. We have three agenda items as a part of this item. So the first is to provide an overview of the Copilot Chat Pilot and Launch that we did recently. And then George will be providing an overview of specifically how OCTC is using Copilot Chat. And then finally, we'll be providing an overview and request approval of the State Bar generative AI framework. So we'll start with the Copilot Chat Pilot and Launch overview. This was a pilot and launch that we've done very recently. And we can start by talking about really what Copilot Chat is. So Copilot Chat is an AI chat tool built specifically for work. It is a closed environment. It exists within our Microsoft tenant. And really, what you need to know about it is it looks like and acts like ChatGPT or Claude, but it's integrated into the Microsoft environment. So it can do kind of the things that we expect out of a generative AI assistant. It can answer questions quickly and accurately, generate content, analyze documents. And a big thing is that we can upload files to it to do analysis and summarize those kind of tasks that we expect out of these tools. So some of the key benefits for the State Bar, Copilot Chat is included in our existing Microsoft subscription, so there is no additional cost to the State Bar. And then a big jump for us internally is that we have data protection and confidentiality using Copilot Chat, so confidential documents can be uploaded. The only kind of documents that can't are query documents, which we've done a lot of work to communicate to staff about. And then just so you all know, prompts and responses are logged for security and compliance. This is a closed system, and it's not being used to train the generative AI models. Another thing about Copilot Chat is the staff cannot see across each other's chats, if that makes sense. So your individual chat is your tenant, so someone from one office cannot see what's happening in OCTC. And likewise, these are these are closed sessions with each individual person. So Copilot Chat went through a very rigorous process for evaluating whether we want to use it and whether it is compliant with our processes. It started with a review by the Office of the General Counsel, who evaluated the terms, data privacy, and compliance requirements. Then our cybersecurity team reviewed Copilot Chat. We're always doing reviews of Microsoft and all their features, so this was an additional review for us. And just so you all know, this did impact how we configured and implemented Copilot Chat. So for example, our cybersecurity team decided that we did not like the risk of having Copilot Chat connected to the web, and so we turned that feature off. So this directly impacted how we configured Copilot Chat for the State Bar. And then finally, we did IT permissions configuration. Again, a great part of having this built as a Microsoft product is that it's inheriting our security system setups and our permissions that we already have, but we are also able to go a step further and for Copilot Chat, specifically create role-based access controls. We started this off in September with having a pilot program. So it was 29 participants, 11 offices, and two weeks long. And what we really did was set up, you know, an orientation and training. We provided really specific prompts that we wanted these pilot members to do so that we could really have some quantitative data about how Copilot was performing. We gave office-specific tasks, so each office has their own things that they really focus on, so how did we test for those? We did weekly check-ins, and then our pilot members were great about providing really specific feedback on how Copilot Chat was performing. And one of the big takeaways, I would say, I heard from all of our pilot members is that Copilot really outperformed what we expected. So that was great to hear. But we also, you know, we really did want to take stock of where's Copilot Chat excelling and then where is it not? So this is where our pilot members really talked about where it excelled. So it was content creation and drafting, writing those first draft emails, memos, letters, creating templates and standard documents. And then jumping down, document summarization came out as the biggest thing that the pilot people liked. So they thought quickly extract key points for long documents and then identifying main themes and takeaways. We also saw that the system was good at brainstorming and doing really high-level data analysis. So something like if we have 100 complaints coming from the public, how can we summarize the top 10 things that are coming out of those complaints? But it's also really important to acknowledge the limitations of Copilot Chat. This has been very embedded into our rollout, is really letting people know, where did we see that it was falling short? And we communicating about, we don't recommend Copilot Chat and relying on it for these purposes. So the first one is legal research. So over and over again, we found that this was not something Copilot Chat excelled at. It was outdated and incomplete. And so we really are recommending people stick with the methods that they were already using in terms of legal research and not relying on Copilot Chat for that. Image generation continues to be very poor in Copilot Chat, so that's interesting. And then complex file handling. So this is really adding too many files, adding, having too long of a chat really impacts the performance of Copilot Chat. So we have provided guidance to staff about how to get around that. How do you keep your chat short and then start a new one, rather than trying to build pages and pages of a single chat? So we've provided a lot of guidance on that. And then finally, we've just found that for administrative and like calculation purposes, we saw a lot of errors. So we're saying, really stick with kind of how you're doing those calculations before. I think Copilot Chat just does not have the context that we need to do those kind of So a couple of weeks ago, we rolled this out to the State Bar. And before anyone had Copilot Chat, we started with reaching out to managers and supervisors and asking them to identify and communicate the use cases where we do not want Copilot Chat used. Maybe it needs more testing, you know, that use case, it needs more controls, more guardrails around it. So our managers and supervisors identified those and communicated them to staff. The next part of this rollout is staff completed an 18-minute training prior to Copilot Chat being launched on their account. So this is a current prerequisite. It will continue to be required before anybody can use Copilot Chat, is this training that really focuses on what is Copilot Chat good to use for, what is it not good to use for? There's a good section about the importance of human review and the ownership of and the requirement for human review. And it really just prepares them to use this system. Staff were also provided a resource center, a feedback forum, and we've done weekly office hours for support since we've gone live with Copilot Chat. We will be planning to do monthly Copilot Chat Fridays for the next four to six months, and it will be embedded in new people joining the State Bar, their onboarding process. And I will turn it over now to George to talk about OCTC specifically.
Sorry about that. So in accordance with what she talked about for office-specific use, OCTC has put in place some policies to govern the use within OCTC. And we've basically looked at two different sets of uses, and I'll talk about those in a second. But importantly, across all of the uses, there's a series of common requirements. We have reminded people that this is a tool that's intended to increase efficiency. It's not intended to replace individuals' actions, and we've provided them with guidance, general guidance. So we've reminded everybody that we remain subject to the State Bar's general guidelines on use of AI, as well as COPRAC's guidance for the use of generative AI by lawyers. And we've reminded people again that there is no uploading into Copilot Chat of either criminal record information. Or for us, we also have access to certain DMV information that we are also not going to be uploading into Copilot Chat. We've also emphasized repeatedly that even for all of our uses, across all of our uses, human review remains essential for both accuracy, completeness, and quality. All three of those things need to be checked to make sure that it's working. So subject to those common requirements, we have encouraged people to kind of experiment and use it for work product that is not going to be incorporated in any formal external communication. So for example, document summarization, help in drafting lengthy internal emails. That's just subject to the common requirements. For anything that is going to generate work product to be incorporated in a formal external communication, some examples, a closing letter to a complainant or an inquiry letter that's going to be sent out to respondent or anything else, there are a number of serious additional requirements. And we'll turn to those right now, if we could. So the additional requirements for those types of uses, we're only allowing people to use prompts that have been reviewed and approved by a committee that we've put together within OCTC for this purpose. It's a committee that's designed to oversee and monitor our use of artificial intelligence. So these prompts would have to be subject to our review protocol, which includes two levels of testing. First, testing by the committee itself, and then, once the committee has approved the prompt, testing by a limited pilot group of users. And we've identified a particular team within OCTC that has a supervisor who's interested in this, that would serve as kind of that beta testing, once the AI committee has approved the prompts. The testing is on actual closed cases, so that we can compare the AI outputs to what was done in the closed cases originally, as a measure of seeing without bias, whether the AI tool matches, or if it doesn't, if it has a sufficient explanation and potentially finds an error that should have been caught in the original closed case. And all of this testing is done to ensure that the prompt, as designed, provides a baseline level of accuracy, completeness, and quality. That is, that we're confident that in most cases, it will provide us with work product that, although it remains subject to review, is something that is worth having and will actually assist with efficiency. If the prompts are approved, they are added to a bank of approved prompts, and those approved prompts are then made available to OCTC for use for that particular task. The prompt can't be changed without coming back to the AI committee, because any change in prompts can produce drastic changes in the outputs. So even after the prompts are approved, again, there's an emphasis that human review remains required to ensure accuracy, completeness, and quality. And in addition, if any work product is generated by AI to be used in an external communication, we're requiring that that external communication include this notification to be posted in each communication. Microsoft's Copilot Chat, a generative artificial intelligence tool, was used to assist in the preparation of this document. OCTC staff have reviewed the content of this document for accuracy, completeness, and quality, and remain responsible for its content. So that will be on every document that goes out in which AI has been used to generate work product that was used to assist in preparing that document. So that's basically our approach. We have rolled it out. Our AI committee is in place and has Copilot Chat access. They've all completed the training. A large number of our staff members have completed the training and now have access to Copilot Chat. Staff is still receiving training and getting that access. We've made the AI training resources available to staff. We have both general Copilot Chat materials, as well as some materials on prompt generation and how to put together prompts. And as we develop prompts that are approved by the AI committee for the generation of work product that's going to be incorporated in external communications, staff will be trained on the use of those prompts as they are generated, so that everybody will get training on those before they are allowed to use them. And so that basically is OCTC's approach to using Copilot Chat. With that, I'll turn it back to Helen.
Thank you, George. And this is our third item of the day, and I'm going to be presenting and requesting approval of our generative AI framework. I'll start by introducing what the overview of this task. So the Audit Committee requested an AI Governance and Oversight Plan, and it has four elements. The first is the development of a comprehensive reporting guidelines for the use of AI, including our use cases, risk assessment, and performance metrics. The second is a monitoring framework for identifying potential biases and ensuring we have alignment with the State Bar's AI use guidelines. The third is understanding and a monitoring framework to regularly evaluate our AI systems for compliance with legal, ethical, and operational standards. And then identifying a plan for scheduled updates from offices using the AI tools about how we are using it and how they are performing. We presented this to the Audit Committee in November of 2025. Since we met, that committee recommended some changes and updates. So here are some of the updates that we've made since then. The first is that we refined our risk classification. So the big one that we updated was the high-risk category. The high-risk category includes AI outputs implemented without mandatory human review. And so we will talk about this a little bit later. Our high-risk category will, anything that fits into there, will require Board of Trustee approval. So anything that is, does not have mandatory human review, fits into that high-risk category. And then we've also added a section there for just board-designated sensitive areas that you all decide you want us to bring to you before we explore as a generative AI use case. So that, an example of that would be bar exam questions. Another change since November 4th is that we removed the high-risk confidential information category, and I did want to provide some background on this. What we, you know, once we pressure-tested this, we came to the conclusion, all of our systems, regardless of whether they're low, medium, or high, have to go through the same rigorous legal, compliance, cybersecurity review. So having this as a standalone didn't really make sense, and it kind of, what we want to communicate is regardless of your risk classification, low, medium, or high, you have to be going through the same rigorous process to make sure that the data handling, cybersecurity, and compliance requirements are all met. And so while that category was taken off the risk assessment, you will see it embedded throughout the governance plan about the requirements to do it regardless of risk classification. Other things that were asked of us from the Audit Committee were to add State Bar-specific use cases in all the risk classifications, so we have done that. And then we've provided a detailed step-by-step risk assessment rubric. So how are we going to classify things in each risk category? So that's been added to the staff report that you have today. So I'm going to go over our framework summary. This is, this is our, how do we get generative AI from an idea to implementation to monitoring and then reporting? So this has three main parts. So the first is the Evaluation and Implementation Playbook. The second is post-launch monitoring. So how do we make sure how, we understand how those systems are performing? And then third, what is our reporting structure and cadence and reporting out to the Board of Trustees? So I'll start with the first, which is a really important, scalable, and repeatable Evaluation and Implementation Playbook. So it starts with identifying use cases for generative AI. Some of those will happen organically. Staff will identify them. Other times, it might be more leadership-driven, but the idea here is to really keep a repository of what are those potential use cases we could use generative AI for, and what is the priority of them, risk level of them, those kind of questions. The second is really reviewing the business case for that use case. So how much, you know, what's the ROI of it? Is it worth the risk? Is it worth thinking about? And this fits into our, the IT process that we have now. So when we have an idea in, if we would like a project at the State Bar now, we submit a business case to IT. Now, when people do that, if they check a box that they will be using generative AI as a part of that project, that is when my office and this framework will be looped in, where they will have to answer additional questions, we're calling it the AI Governance Addendum, about how they plan to use generative AI, and we'll start walking them through that risk rubric that the Audit Committee asked us to review. And that would get routed to me, my office, for review and to include OGC and cybersecurity in all the right ways. Once that use case, that business case gets approved, we would do some solution selection and approval process. So this is where we actually have our first governance body. The Generative AI Review and Staff Committee will approve use cases and the solution selection before launch. So they will have a say in, should we invest in the system? Do we think it is good enough? Do we already have a system that can do this, that we're already paying for, and we already have the security and compliance already built around it? And so that governing body will really support us in deciding what solution is best matched with each use case. This is also where we're going to begin identifying and writing down or documenting risks, potential for bias, you know, key performance indicators. How do we benchmark? Is this tool actually making us more efficient, you know, more accurate? And what would, what would it look like for us to make this worth it? And then, once we get to the implementation stage, this project policy template is probably the most important document in all of this. This is really where we are going to ask teams to be documenting, how are you going to test the efficacy of this system? And detailing out what kind of studies, what kind of comparisons, how many do we have to test that have to be accurate before we can put it out there? It also will be where I identify risk and bias and write out our risk and bias mitigation plans. And this really lays the framework for the measure and monitor stage that's next, because we will be going back to this document to say, are we doing that? Are we meeting the performance indicators that we described? Are we seeing the risks and biases at all that we identified as a possibility? So after, so really, the part, point of part one is to give a consistent and scalable way to get a generative AI idea from identify to implementation. And then part two is this post-launch monitoring framework. So once we do go live, we will have a generative AI oversight panel that will conduct semi-annual reviews of the State Bar generative AI tools post-launch. So we would do this every six months, really using the documents that we developed in the first phase, to say, is this performing like we expected? Is there any kind of drift that we're seeing or new risks? Or have risks gone away? And also making sure that we're still, you know, in compliance with legal and cybersecurity reviews. And then finally, we are proposing my office provide a generative AI semi-annual Audit Committee report about how we're using it and how it's performing. And so just to delineate the two governing bodies, so we have, both of these groups will have representation from the offices that are using the system, my office, IT, OGC, compliance. So it's going to be a team that provides like a holistic view of how that system is performing. The first one, the Generative AI Review Staff Committee, is approval-focused. So before launch, before buying a selection, they will provide that go/no-go decision and help select the right solution. The Oversight Panel, the Generative Oversight Panel, is post-launch. It is monitoring-focused. So they will be conducting those semi-annual reviews of the AI tools. One of the things that you'll see in this item is that we've provided a step-by-step guide that operationalizes how this governance framework would work for staff. So it really takes them through and kind of makes it real, how would this actually work at the State Bar? From step one, you have an idea, to all the way down to implementation. So this really is just kind of an operationalized view of our governance plan. And I do think a big part of this is ensuring staff understands, not just like what to do, but also why. Why is it really important that we protect our data? Why is it really important that we have protocols for human review? All of that is outlined in this step-by-step guide. It's also important to note that this governance plan does not sit by itself. It builds upon and operates within the State Bar's established policy foundation. So we have interim generative AI guidelines that tell staff about how to use generative AI while establishing confidentiality projections, protections, and content verification. We also have an approved tool list that they, staff should be following. And there's also COPRAC practical guidance about how to use generative AI. We're also working on a data governance framework that's in development now. And then this really falls into all of our IT policies, employee handbooks, about, you know, your expectations when you use our systems. So not all generative AI applications require the same kind of oversight. So our framework employs three risk classifications that determine review requirements. I'll start with low risk. ROC, low risk is where use cases are for internal drafting purposes only. They do not influence external communications, and users maintain full control over the final outputs. And for something that's categorized as low risk, that would just require ODT approval and basic compliance verification, so cybersecurity, OGC. Example use cases would be, you know, internal email drafting, template creation for routine correspondence internally, initial draft generation for internal memos or policies. Medium risk is generative AI use cases that assist in creating content or analysis that will be shared externally. So George shared an example of one of those earlier. Or it could influence our operations, but still has mandatory human review and approval process. So still full control at the end. This is subject to the full governance and monitoring framework that I introduced. So an example of this would be generating responses to routine public inquiries with mandatory staff review before sending, preparing initial drafts of letters, including like closing disciplinary complaints with mandatory staff review for sending. Now, this is our high-risk category. And again, this really talks about where outputs are automatically implemented, shared, or acted upon without mandatory human review or approval step. This generally limits our organizational control over the final output, and it could impact operations or external parties. That's the first part of high risk. The other part are, is kind of a use cases that involve subject matters that the Board of Trustees has designated as requiring high heightened oversight due to their sensitivity, reputational implications, ethical considerations, or policy significance to the State Bar's mission. This would also go through the full governance and monitoring framework, but also requires board approval before even pursuing. So that would come to you before we purchase a system, you know, explore it in any way. So example use cases, for automation examples, that would be, you know, custom email responses to public inquiries that are sent without staff review. So this would be like a, an AI chatbot is a good example of that. There are also now systems that will autonomously perform multiple steps for you without humans in the loop confirming that that's the right next step. The other, you know, down at the bottom, some of the board-designated examples, development or drafting of bar examination questions, and then automated screenings of resumes or other application reviews to make hiring or personnel decisions. And then this is just kind of a reminder of how this all fits in together. Pre-launch, we do all of this documentation about our performance indicators. We identify those risks and potential for bias. We create all these plans, these risk and bias mitigation plans, review protocols, error classification framework, everything like that. And then in post-launch, the monitoring really evaluates how we're performing against those things that we've developed and that we've decided we're going to measure ourselves against. And then down at the bottom is just like, is just an example of what a two-year view would look like. So after launch, we're asking for performance summary memos every 30 days for the first 90 days. And then after, in yellow, you'll see, that's when they would have the semi-annual monitoring assessments done by the governing body. And that is what kind of a two-year plan would look like. And that is the end of my presentation, and thank you all.
Very good. Thank you, folks. Great. Lot of information. Any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Point of Inter.
So George, or maybe Alice, could you walk me through how you would use AI for the complaints that, let's say, come in? So the way I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So if a member of the public wants to file a complaint against an attorney, one of the ways they could do it is online, right? Then they fill out all these fields. So is it my understanding that after they submit the online complaint, that goes to a human review, who will then create the prompts? And... create the prompts, uh, and, uh, the, the composition of the complaint? And then use AI to run the analysis as you spoke about yesterday? Is that how it's going to work?
So yes, when, 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 uh, when someone submits an online complaint, it goes first to our data processing team, which basically inputs that complaint into our file system, our case management system. It's then assigned to a human, um, and they're responsible for doing the initial review of that complaint. Where we would be using AI in that process would be the human who's conducting the initial review of that complaint would have available for use as a tool, the AI prompt that Atlas has designed to run, to do a draft for their review to try and make more efficient their initial review of that complaint.
Okay, so we are not looking at doing something where someone files a complaint online and it then goes straight to AI and does the analysis without any, uh, human review? That's not a part of the plan, right?
No, um, our, our, our proposal is to use AI as a tool to assist in that review, but a human would be doing that review ultimately.
Great, thank you.
And I should say, I forgot to introduce Atlas DiMarco from our intake section, who is here to answer questions. He's done a significant amount of work in, on our AI committee and in developing prompts for what I was just discussing with.
Thank you, welcome. Um, trustee Solwell.
A line of questioning around training and then also cost. And maybe I could just go to the cost question first. If I, if I missed this, I apologize, but, um, in order to, uh, implement this, uh, in the way that we're envisioning implementing this, uh, is there some cost to us to do so?
I'll throw that to Helen.
Okay. Um, I think that will depend on the use case probably. And I do think that's part of that, uh, selection and approval process. As use cases come up, we will be doing an ROI, uh, assessment to say, how much would this cost? Would it be a net benefit to us? Things like, and we will be focusing on using Copilot Chat, which is at no cost to us other than the, you know, the staff time, like Atlas's time to develop prompts. Um, we do want to do this in a very cost-efficient way. And we do think Copilot Chat is a great foundation for us to, um, really focus our use cases on what we can do there, considering it's no extra cost to the state bar.
Very good. Um, and then on training, do, um, do team members have to e- exhibit some sort of level of proficiency in the use of, uh, of this tool before they're, they're going to be allowed to, uh, you know, to, I guess, to no longer test drive it? And, uh, and then will there be some sort of regularized aspect to that?
That's a great question. I can start with a more general question than maybe George, you can talk about OCTC's, um, approach to this. Um, I spoke a little bit about that project policy document that we're going to be requiring for each, uh, use case. That is where we are going to ask people to identify if there are experience requirements in order to use it. So do you need X amount of years or do you need to be a certain level in order to, uh, use AI in the use case that they're talking about? A good example of this, um, we used Claude AI to, uh, help do some translation of our complaints. Um, in OCTC, that person is a trained AI translator and it goes through consistent human review over and over again. But that person was identified because of their, uh, previous experience and certifications in that role. Um, but we will be relying on the teams in that project policy document to identify if there are prerequisites to somebody using, um, an AI tool. And George, I can, I can turn it over to you for OCTC.
Sure. So for OCTC, our initial rollout is a tool that's going to be used by attorneys. Um, they will have both the training that Helena has provided on how to use Copilot Chat, which is a prerequisite. Um, and, and as we develop prompts, there will also be internal training on how to use those prompts. That training, um, you know, I guess it's a difficult question to answer because the training that we're going to require may vary depending on both the group that's going to be using the prompt and the nature of the prompt. You know, the prompt that we've developed for intake review of complaints, once you get trained on how to use it, um, it's fairly intuitive in how to use it. Um, and then it's a question of ensuring that we require that people engage in the required review of the outputs of that, um, and that they understand what the inputs are. So we'll probably provide ongoing training as we continue to use it. But what exactly that training will be, will probably vary, as I said, depending on both the group and the nature of the prompt.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Gore.
Uh, we know that, uh, law firms are using, uh, quite a bit of the AI assisted, um, tools. Can you speak to any other state bars who are engaged with some of the, um, AI-generated resources?
That's a great question. I do know there's a big focus across the country on, on how we're doing this. What I can say is we really looked more at our peer organizations here locally in California for how they are using it. So, um, the city of San Jose is a very good example. And our, uh, generative AI framework, um, really mimics a lot of what they have done in terms of creating gates and security and compliance. So I'd say, yes, we looked at some of the state bars, but we also just looked at more like the federal, local government generally, um, it to, to develop this system.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Barahona.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. It was super helpful. It does feel like this increases efficiency, but it also seems to address some of the state auditor, uh, requests and recommendations around efficiency. And I guess I, I'm curious if, um, if you're, if, if we are thinking about the ways in which this helps advance some of those auditor requests. I, I suspect we are, but just wanted to hear from you all.
So I could answer for OCTC, for OCTC, the answer is yes. The last state audit and the last several state audits have suggested that we continue to explore ways to make our handling of cases more efficient. That was part of the response to the, uh, proposal of new case processing guidelines. And the request for staffing was that before they would look at requests for staffing, they wanted us to explore automation and other ways to make our handling of cases more efficient. So this is part of that response to that, to try and put us in that position.
Thanks. And just one more question. Um, it does feel like we're in this really, um, uh, innovative opportunity as we develop these prompts. It, it feels like, um, uh, as we gather more information, as we implement, uh, this tool, um, for efficiency. I'm also curious, could we teach others how to develop these types of tools as a revenue generating, um, opportunity? I just have some curiosity. I, I think, uh, we're in the precipice of, of so much innovation around this and the, the, the hours upon hours that have been, uh, really invested in, in thinking through all of the different, um, steps in this and all of the framework. I'm, I'm just curious if we could be, um, really a model in teaching others how to perhaps do something similar.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, trustee. I joined in March and I can just say from, and I came from other, um, parts of the government. And the state bar was already very far ahead of where a lot of people were on this front. And I think this represents another step in that ma- maturation. And I think we can continue to be that leader, um, across the board. Yeah, and I do think, um, there's an opportunity here that if we were to adopt this framework, um, it could be shared with our grantees, um, within our Office of Access and Inclusion too. And that's something we're very keen to do.
Anyone else? Trustee Tony.
I was very impressed by this presentation. One of the things I really liked is the identification of strengths and the identification of weaknesses. That gives me confidence that a thorough review has been done. I never trust a presentation where everything is, you know, everything is completely one-sided and everything is perfect, okay? I never trust that. I do appreciate ver- the very clear identification of limitations because it gives me more confidence that the strengths are real, okay? And not just for show. I'm, um, I wanna, you, you know, in the, to follow up, um, uh, trustee Solwell's question about cost. I'm, I'm hoping that the six-month, um, uh, reviews that the, um, Generative AI Oversight Committee is doing, the assessment, will include a, a, um, assessment of, of, of staff time as a cost. I understand that all of these committees, reviews, meetings do take staff time. And I'm hoping that you will also share with, share with us both what's the staff time involved in these processes? And then obviously, what are the staff gains in efficiency? That I presume will be offset, or if not offset in the short term, um, you know, a projection, because some of it may not be short-term. I don't know, okay? Um, that's the kind of stuff that I would appreciate. And then here's my one question. I, I'd like a little bit more, so, so I understand that this presentation is a dual presentation, both of what OCTC is doing specifically, but also how the state bar, which includes obviously other departments, are using generative AI. And so, um, I understand that in, what I understand from this presentation is that in OCTC, the, um, all of the outputs of the AI are, are subject to staff review. That's what I think I heard very clearly. Um, but I also, in this presentation, see a definition of high-risk, um, outputs that don't require mandatory human review and approval. And I'd like to understand a little bit about what that means and what would be reasons why you would want to use AI without, um, staff review and approval?
Yeah, I can field that question. Um, for that, for the, you know, not having human review, we don't currently have any systems that meet that definition. Um, and nor do we have immediate plans to do so. I do think some of the automation examples represent things we prob- a lot of us are dealing, are interacting with on the day-to-day. So something like a chatbot is something a lot of companies have, a lot of customer service has. And so we did want to make that very clear. We, that would be something that would have to come to the Board of Trustees. Um, we are not pursuing that right now. Um, similarly, um, there are these systems, a lot of them are called agentic systems, that autonomously perform multi-step. So if I submit an application, it puts my data in seven, seven different places without asking me as a staff person, was that the right place to put that data? Um, we are also very cautious about doing this because it has a big downstream impact on our, our, you know, accuracy data-wise. Um, and so that's another one that we're really watching. A lot of systems are trying to add those kind of features and we are actively making sure those features are not enabled on our systems. Um, and just really calling out that that would fit into a high-risk situat- uh, a, a high-risk, um, category and would require all of your input on this. And just a really, really high level of testing to make sure the accuracy was there if we were to pursue it in the future.
Uh, here's my final question. According to these proposed, um, rules and, you know, protocols, um, that will be asked to take a vote on soon, would the, um, situation of the, uh, psychometrician using AI to create, um, bar exam questions? Would that have been allowed under this, um, framework?
Only with board approval, so you would have had the opportunity to say no.
Thank you.
Trustee Tony, can I add something there though? I, I will just say, so, and that, but that is because, just to be very clear, because the board has identified that as something that the board determines is something that is, you know, um, politically sensitive enough, for lack of a better description, that the board would like that to be something that comes to the board for approval. Otherwise, because there would be human review and so forth through content validation and other things that Donna could speak to if, if necessary, it would not necessarily be in that high-risk category. So I just want to be very clear here, there's two buckets of high risk. Bucket one is all of this automated decision-making, you know, agentic, those types of things that Helen just described. Bucket two is things that the board is identifying as being things that should be subject to board approval. We have already heard that from the board, um, or from many members of the board. So we have, uh, pre-put that into that category in this framework. But I just want to be very clear here as to how things would be categorized if we had not already heard from the board that this is something that should not, that should, that we, if we had not heard from the board, that it should be in a high-risk category.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I just, um, wanted the reassurance, um, in the public forum that, um, these rules will prevent something like that happening in the future without knowledge of the board, without approval and review. And I think that's a good thing. And I have to tell you, as the, you know, as a AI skeptic, I am, uh, very much impressed by what has been presented and the thoughtfulness behind it. The presentations earlier to the Audit Committee, um, and the advance and response that I see in this presentation from the feedback provided at the Audit Committee meeting in November. That's meaningful to me. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? This is an action item. Why don't we display the motion? I'm open to a motion in a second.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Motion by trustee Barahona. Second by trustee Tony. Real call vote.
Barahona.
Aye.
Una Ventura.
Aye.
Good, not present. Gore. Grande.
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Judge Yello.
Aye.
Solwell.
Aye.
Stevens, not present. Tony.
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros.
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much and thank you to everyone for a great presentation, very important topic. We'll move on now to the discussion regarding the 2026 Board Planning Session. And we're led by Erica Doherty.
Thank you, and there should be some slides. All right, good morning, everyone. Um, we are hoping to, uh, do have some time to have an initial conversation about the, what the board would like to see in more detail in January at our next meeting. Uh, so typically, the first meeting of the year includes a Board of Trustees' planning session. And, um, in more recent history, at the November meeting, we have had what is called kind of the planning for the planning session conversation to see what items, um, are of interest to the board to be taken up, um, by staff in the interim to bring you back more information at that January planning meeting. Uh, this is a year where pursuant to Business and Professions Code Section 6140.12, uh, the board is required to review and update the strategic plan to the extent the board sees fit. Uh, so that, as you may recall, uh, the strategic plan is from 2022 to 2027. So with 2026, that will be one of those two-year increments where the board is expected to take a look at that. I'll also add that just as part of the annual budget submission process, uh, we are required to report on the measures that have been taken to implement the strategic plan, as well as the measures that the board will take, uh, in the remaining years of the strategic plan, which is really this last year, 2026. And that gets submitted to, uh, uh, our stakeholders as part of the annual budget process on February 28th. So what has happened so far is throughout this year, through several conversations with different trustees, staff identified a few topics as starting points. There was also a survey that was solicited by, or that was sent out by staff, solicity input from the trustees, on those topics that we had identified through conversations, as well as having an open-ended component to it. So there were pre-filled categories for strategic goals two, three, and four. And the trustees were offered the opportunity to say whether that particular topic should be brought forward, should not be brought forward, if the trustee was neutral on it, or if they needed more information. And then for each of goals one through five, there was also an open-ended response option where trustees could add input. We had six of the trustees respond to that. So I just want to kind of present these within each goal. And then at the end of the presentation, there will obviously be an opportunity for a conversation amongst the trustees to decide if there's any of these that they would like to be brought forward with more detail at the January planning session, or if there's anything else that is of interest to the trustees to bring forward, either in addition to or instead of those particular topics. Okay, so just a lay of the land for those of you who are not so familiar with our strategic plan. There are five goals set forth in the strategic plan. Goal five is a relatively new goal that was adopted in 2024 when we last did the two-year assessment of the strategic plan. At that time, there were also some changes to the implementation steps that helped to implement the five goals within the plan. So within goal one, there are a few things that were identified by different trustees in response to that survey. One of those things was to try and further address the complaint backlog. This has been a little bit of a theme at this meeting. You know, we heard from George yesterday in regards to the annual discipline report, as well as the update on OCTC metrics. And obviously, you just heard in the generative AI framework item, all of the ways that OCTC is already trying to explore this. As you can see, there were some topics presented by trustees regarding kind of working with the legislature as a key stakeholder to explore opportunities for funding and to reevaluate the backlog. For those trustees that have been here for some time, we have certainly tried these things before, and I think they are frankly things that we typically try in some way, shape, or form nearly every year. Other things that are on here, explore AI use, which we just talked about. And then something that is more consumer-facing is to explore opportunities to enhance the state bar website so that individuals who have submitted a complaint are better able to track the status of that complaint. How we do that currently is there's periodic information provided by OCTC, and then of course, we have our Office of Public Trust Liaison that individual can contact as well to get more information about the status of their complaint. Another topic that was presented was to manage client expectations, and that would include describing, you know, what basically is something that could fit within the jurisdiction of OCTC as a disciplinable offense by an attorney, and what is not, and what are some reasonable expectations for a lawyer to have, or I'm sorry, for a client to have in the attorney-client relationship? Some of that is being done by our Office of Professional Competence, but that's largely attorney-facing, less so public-facing, meaning we focus kind of a lot of our education materials on attorneys, less so on the public. Another area that was suggested is to offer law practice management. There's many ways to do this. I will say that also our Office of Professional Competence is exploring how to do this. What was interesting here was that a trustee recommended that there could be, a license you could really pay to have an audit of their practice. So this is an interesting area as well. Another one that came up as a topic within this goal was possibly regulating private arbitrators. This sort of requires some new rules that would create a path for either discipline or prohibition of certain attorneys engaging in a particular, in, in the practice of arbitration if they violate the Code of Judicial Ethics. And just so you're aware, the Code of Judicial Ethics is not something that we have authority over unless it's an active attorney who's serving as a, a neutral in that capacity. Moving to goal two, so there were also some surveyed initiatives in this, and that included supporting development of a community justice worker program. For those of you who need a little bit more information on that, that is something that is being pursued by several legal aid organizations as an opportunity to embed this professional, which is not a lawyer, within legal aid organizations to be supervised by attorneys, but it would not be someone who has to go to law school. There were also input on supporting immigration defense and related services, incentivizing pro bono legal services, and then doing some further evaluation on Cal-accredited and unaccredited law school performance. This is something, just so you're aware, that's already planned for 2026, but it could be something that the trustees want to move, be more involved in than getting a presentation by staff. Other input that we received was to seek collaborative partnerships with public and philanthropic communities, including affinity bar associations. We had some discussion about that in some of our items yesterday. Using technology to help individuals find attorneys. Our Office of Access and Inclusion is working on something similar in this space right now, but we could certainly bring more information back to the group. Investigating and enforcing rules to stop unlicensed lawyer referral services. I think we may be talking about that a little bit later today when you see an item related to lawyer referral service rules. And then increase the level of attorney preparedness, so kind of this proactive education, regulation, and so forth, to reduce the likelihood of discipline and complaints and to address perhaps subpar practice standards. Moving to goal three, this is regulating the legal profession. Some of the suggestions that were provided were to develop succession planning requirements. I'll just say that this is something that I'm personally interested in, mostly because we do have an aging attorney population, and, and we are seeing more lawyers who are trying to retire from the practice of law, and some who are leaving the practice of law without a plan to do so. And this can, you know, negatively impact clients who are left abandoned in certain instances. Another one was to develop other proactive regulation obligations beyond CTAP. Things that trustees presented were suggesting a statewide recognition program to incentivize attorney participation in some activities, such as, you know, public protection, access to justice, MCL and so forth. A survey of licensees on what gaps exist in terms of information education. We have done some of these types of surveys before, so that's something we could bring back to the trustees as well. And then on the flip side, we did have some input saying that we should just stop adding more obligations for licensees, because it creates, you know, more work for attorneys, but also frankly, more work for staff to implement those initiatives as well. For goal four, which focuses on engaging our partners, something that was surveyed was to explore partnerships to reestablish the state bar swearing-in ceremony. This is something where, you know, when people become admitted to the practice of law, we used to, when we were a unified bar, offer these swearing-in ceremonies that were done in large facilities such as convention centers, where everyone would show up and raise their hand at the same time. And the state bar supported the, procuring those venues and participating in that process. We stopped that around the time that we separated into CLA and the state bar. Items that were also proposed were to highlight some of state bar leadership and our legal services partners through stories that show competence, consistency, and transparency, and to assess our current partnerships and explore opportunities to bring other partners and stakeholders into the circle. And then finally, on goal five, which as I mentioned earlier was our newer goal for us, a lot of the input that we received from trustees was to use AI to improve state bar-related services with human oversight, something we really just discussed. Overseas state bar staff use of AI in all work activities, and to, again, kind of have a reset year, just kind of take a pause here and see what we are doing so far, what input that is having, and then reevaluate in the future. So with that, it's a lot of information, a lot of opportunity to start kind of the conversation. And really, again, what we're hoping for is some direction from the trustees to determine what areas you are interested in having more information on to be brought back to you in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Looks like a thorough set of subjects. Any thoughts or comments or additions? Vice Chair Tony?
I'd like staff to resend the survey to trustees. We have 13 trustees, and six responses is not enough for me to know what the will of the board is, because I think that should guide what we spend time talking on. And even the ones that are one of six here, it, you know, it may be possible that the people that didn't weigh in might, you know, make it a majority. So I think that that's, that'd be part of my suggestion. I really want to know what, what my colleagues are interested in, what they care about.
Good idea. Yes, trustee Gore?
At the risk of stealing trustee Barahona's topic here, I, I would like to see us do a robust discussion about the finances. In particular, so I don't know where it quite goes under partnerships, but in particular, how do we diversify the revenue sources and what kinds of things we could do to build up the reserve, all the stuff we talked about? So I think in some way, we need a, a real disciplined approach of how we look at the finances and how we can stabilize that in the next strategic plan. And I'll let trustee Barahona jump in here, too.
Yeah, definitely not stealing, we're, we're a team. So, but I would, just to build off on that, it would be helpful for staff to articulate what might be preventing us from pursuing philanthropic dollars. I think there is a, as a non-lawyer, a non-attorney here, there might be some other implic, legal implications I'm just not seeing. It'd be helpful to understand the extent, you know, that that might be true. And it, based on very little research, it, it feels like we may need to have a perhaps different, sort of like, almost like a nonprofit arm to receive certain types of funds, but very, something that you all might know much faster than I, but it'd be helpful to understand that so we can narrow that down. And also, it'd be helpful in that robust review, pursuing, assuming we can pursue philanthropic partners, I'd be happy to sort of help, be helpful if, if possible, on developing a short list of aligned philanthropic leaders across the state, and also ways in which they're, they're already supporting access to justice initiatives across communities.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Sewell?
I mentioned this yesterday. I know that various teams, various units at the bar right now are doing work in the immigrant legal, legal defense space. I do know that there are also some philanthropic partners out there that are working in this space, and I've been attempting to try, and I think we've started the process of trying to get the bar staff and some of those philanthropic entities talking to possibly explore some, some areas of collaboration. But I would just like to sort of reemphasize the fact that I think that we should be doing more in this, in this particular space, because I do think that there are a number of entities that are seeking to, to do work here, including probably folks in the, the pro bono world.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is that helpful?
It, it is. I will just say, I think that, you know, to the extent, well, trustee Tony, I do appreciate your request for more input from the other trustees on the topics. I do think in some ways, this is an opportunity to get that input, recognizing we don't have all 13 here, but, you know, it would be helpful to, to the extent there's anything that, you know, other than these two topics that you would really like to move forward, it would be helpful to hear that now. One, so that we can have it at the January meeting where we really do want to have this conversation. I'm just a little, you know, I don't know that we want to wait to do this again until February. We, we certainly could, but we're just, we're going to hit the time where we may start thinking about our 2027 to 2032 strategic plan before not too long here. So to the extent that the trustees want to have any more discussion at this time.
This is just a question, just out of curiosity. The swearing-in ceremonies, I know I've been asked as a, as a trustee from time to time to swear folks in, but how is that occurring now, for the most part?
So I, Donna can, I'm going to ask Donna for a little help here as well, but my under, we do not do that anymore. So we used to secure facilities to do that. I believe CLA, California Lawyers Association, may continue to be doing it. I know there's lots of law schools that offer it, lots of local bar associations, San Diego County Bar Association as well is an example. I wish trustee Stevens was here because he could speak to that one. But I do think that that's mostly how it's being done. Of course, individuals, you know, may have a relationship with a judge or a, someone else who can swear them in, and they are doing that as well. I will just say that we are exploring for the future, doing some automation as it relates to submission of the oath card. And so to the extent this interacts with that, I just want to be a little bit cautious here, because if we are trying to automate that process, creating these swearing-in ceremonies may implicate our ability to make that, that process a little bit more efficient.
So Erica did a fabulous summary of the different kinds of swearing, swearing-in ceremonies that exist. The only points that I would add, the Committee of Bar Examiners has had on their parking lot list for a number of years, wanting to talk about partnering with CLA on doing these swearing-in ceremonies again. One of the reasons frankly that we have, that we have put that over and not taken it off the parking lot is amongst all of the priorities we have and the funding challenges we have, and that, it just not has, it just hasn't risen to the level of, in our mind, of something that we should be pursuing at this time. The, the sort of counterpoint to that is this is the bar's first opportunity, sort of, first opportunity to really start a potential 40-year relationship with this, with this new attorney being sworn in, and we want to get that relationship off on a good foot, and we want to engage and have this, have a positive experience, have them view the bar in a positive light. So there is, there is that sort of feel-good from our side and from their side and relationship building aspect that is positive, but as I said, in light of the, the, all of the priorities on our plate, this does take time, it does take a little bit of money, and it just hasn't been something that's risen to the top.
My only other question is, Erica, the, the, the item that will come back to us in January, will it look very much like this item, or it will be more fleshed out? And I, I guess, kind of piggyback on trustee Tony's request, even if we were to send the survey out, if we sent the survey out, it would just add to maybe the, the robustness of that, of the, the item they're going to bring back in January. Is that correct?
So I think, I, I will just say, what I've heard today is that we need more information about how we can, you know, help our finances. And so I think, you know, getting some analysis about this ability to have public-private partnerships, to accept private funds, to the extent people want to give that to us, that's something that we can certainly bring back with a lot more information on at a future meeting. Similarly, this, you know, immigrant legal defense space, I think a lot of the public-private partnerships that we just discussed on the other item would be relevant here, as well as kind of describing the landscape of what's available in that space right now through, as well as maybe perhaps pro bono opportunities and so forth. So I think those are areas where we already have enough to bring back a lot more information in January. I do think that for the other topics where there may be, you know, lukewarm sense of whether to pursue them or not, we could certainly, you know, solicit more input, and if something rises to the top, we could, we could provide more input there as well. I will just say, you know, we, we would need quick responses so that we could make sure that we have that information ready. The January meeting will, it's two months away, but it will be here before we know it. So I think that if staff were authorized to kind of pick from those things, we could certainly do that and bring those back. And of course, you know, as I said, there, we would like to move this forward in January, but if we focus on a few things in January, and there's something else that the trustees really want to see, there's nothing that would preclude that necessarily.
Trustee Grande?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add, well, since the swearing-in ceremony came, came up, as a president of a bar association, that is primarily how people, either through law schools or bar associations, will get sworn in. I remember I was actually I remember I was actually sworn in through one of the state bar organized events because I went to law school not locally. So it was, it was a really nice experience, I would say, as someone who went through that, that process. And just with some of the things that Donna was mentioning, so I was the, I think the person that suggested that idea about practice management with audits and having that be something that can be a paid service, just because with colleagues that own small or solo law firms, I think there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of how to run a law firm. There are like some incubator, incubator programs that are offered. I know there's one in LA, and some law schools are, are starting to do that, but I know that there is that interest. And in terms of diversifying our revenue streams, I think that it, that could create, that could create opportunities for us long-term that, that I think there would be interest in people paying for that service. And just with what Donna mentioned, I could, like, I could see in the future, right? Because there is the cost of investing in these, in these, in these ceremonies, right, with the venues. But I also see if, once we do have programs set up, if we did move forward with offering, like something, how to start your own law firm. Hey, you've been in practice for a while, like, let's check in. I could see that, that we could have, we could showcase those things from the beginning to show that the state bar is, is a resource and that it's not something to be feared by attorneys, that there are actually pathways that people can really set themselves up for success for that 40-year relationship. So I just wanted to highlight and underscore that.
Trustee Barahona.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure if you mentioned this, Erica, so pardon me if you did, but I have some curiosity about potentially adding, I don't know where this goes on the priority list for this planning session, but it does, it does feel important to continue to build really strong relationships with the Assembly and Senate Judiciary Committees and to continue to both set up for the makings potentially of a fee increase into the future, but ultimately to really continue to lay out the ways in which we are working to operate more efficiently and highlight some of the innovations that, that we're leading. But from like a relationship standpoint, I don't know if that's the right venue necessarily, and Donna might have some insights on this, too, but I didn't hear you say that, but you may have, but just wanted to add that as a, as a, as a potential conversation.
Sure. So I'll just say, I didn't highlight it, so Trustee Barahona, thank you for catching that, but I do think that is something that's within our strategic plan already. So the question is, I know that, you know, our Chair and Vice Chair and our Executive Director will be doing some of that in the next few months. So the question is, to the extent that other trustees want to be more proactive in that space as well, I think that's certainly something that could be added as perhaps an implementation step, or, or something that just could be done as well, of course. If I may, just to go back to Trustee Grande's comments about a couple of different things, I do think this is an interesting area to highlight, where we've heard some input from trustees about, you know, kind of improving or, or having a more of a partnership with our licensees. And this is where I would just say, I think the pendulum is swinging to some extent. So when we de-unified in 2018, we were really focused on being truly a regulatory organization, where we admit and discipline attorneys and perform other regulatory functions associated with their license. CLA was going to be, and continues to be, an area for, under which there's educational opportunities through MCLD, there's, there's those swearing-in ceremonies, there's, you know, how to grow and maintain a successful law practice, those types of things that we're hearing. The pendulum, we thought at a staff level, perhaps went too far. As you've heard over the course of the past several years, we are offering, you know, education through MCLD now that focuses on a few different things. A lot of that is in the professional competence ethics space, trying to keep attorneys, you know, pulling them out upstream from the discipline system in hopes that they don't get there at all. And then other things have been focused on those specialty credits that attorneys are required to do, but still largely with kind of a keep them out of the discipline system focus. So we have programming that's related to, you know, substance abuse and maintaining competence as an attorney. We have things related to implicit bias. We have things now related to, you know, generative AI and technology in the practice of law and making sure that lawyers are using that in a way that will not create complications with our ethical responsibilities. So I will just say that, you know, this is a little bit of a shift, and I'm not sure where the right line is, but we did go from being, you know, a unified bar to a very focused only on regulation, and I think we are slowly moving the pendulum back a little bit. The question is how far the trustees want, want to make that move.
Trustee, Trustee Grande.
Yeah, and I think the idea for this really came about because with that CTAP group that, that we did, that testing group, I, I heard feedback through just the, one of the different lawyer groups that I'm a part of from someone who participated in it, and they were so happy that they did it, right? It was such a great experience, and they were like encouraging other attorneys that if, you know, the opportunity came up again for them to, to participate in something like that. And I think, I just see that there's ways that we can just do some work on, like, specific things that we know are, are problematic for law firms that, that are attorneys and have them end up in the, in the discipline system, that I think we could probably prevent some of that long-term, right? So, but yeah, I, I thank you for the, for the context.
Excuse me, I'd like to say something. I was told that I had to leave on the only African American. I was told that I have to leave on the only African American here. I went online, followed the instructions on how to come here and make comments. Now, if a Lancaster, you know, that's two, two and a half hour drive. You could deny me the right, I'm the only black person, but I say I'm a foundation Black American. The governor signed this law, you're going to establish us from regular African. But anyway, I want to speak, I have topics that I did put in online, and I want to speak on a couple of them, okay? So I go to city meetings all the time, I go to the county, I know how this works. I've been doing it for years. So to tell me I'm the only Black person here that I have to go, I can't speak, I'm not agreeing with that. And I, I'm a pro bono, I mean, I'm a pro bono, a pro attorney, I work the courts, and I have something I want to say. I wouldn't come here in a rain just to sit here and hear you guys.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Our meeting was agendized on the web to the public. Our public comment was first thing on our agenda or near the top, and it was held at the beginning of our meeting, which began, yes, our meeting began yesterday morning at 11:00 AM. This is the continuation of our meeting that started yesterday. Our open public comment was taken yesterday when the meeting, it said that the meeting started yesterday.
My comment is about one of the items, not particularly these things, with the city and the state, with the county, if you are just separate from the comment, but then there are also items you want to speak on.
If you would, if you would approach the mic, we'll take two minutes. If you approach the mic at the table in front of you, we'll take two minutes.
Thank you very much. This is very important.
Let me introduce myself. I'm Patricia McGallister, a retired teacher with LAUSD, excuse me.
Sorry, we do need, we do need to set the timer, and that will show on screen momentarily.
My name is Patricia McGallister, a retired teacher with Los Angeles Unified School District and the county with the halls and camps. Now, I'm here to talk about, you have judges and commissioners who are not licensed, okay? And we've got to fix that. That's very important. I had a case here, case number 23AVSCO1106, and her name is Michelle Denise Lim, L-I-M, in Antelope Valley. She doesn't have a license. I went to your website. She's not licensed since 2023, and she's still sitting on the bench. And the reason I checked her license is because I had a case before her, she made sure I was the only one in the room, and she said she's going to let the defendant rule on the case, and she, it's in writing, and she said that she's, she's busy, she doesn't have time to do that, okay? So she doesn't have a license. So I lost that case. I want, it was small claims. I want that retried, okay? You can't do that. You can't have these people with no license, and, and that gets me to the point that who is, who is, who is monitoring this? Because you have in here discussing public comments and whatnot and what this, what the bar is doing? Who is keeping count of, how many lawyers do you have on the bench that are not certified with the, with the state bar? And she's still not on there. I went there today just to see, you know, she's still not on there. She, she has been suspended. Her life, she doesn't have a license. Why is she still sitting on the bar? Okay, she's incompetent. I would have never looked her up if she said she's going to let the defendant rule on the case and you know they ruled against me. So what's going on with the bar? And when I contacted the bar, one of your guys here, I've sent letters to the bar, I have his name and everything, and I asked him, come on, what are you guys going to do about this? Chief trial counsel Lawrence Del Cereo, special deputy trial, nobody, I went to the commission, everybody, nobody want to address the fact that she's not licensed. I give them everything, and they'll send me a letter saying everything except that she doesn't have a license. So I'm from Chicago, okay? So I know the game, I grew up around Italians and the Jewish people. If, if you're allowing these people to sit on the bench, somebody's getting some kickback money, okay? Because they don't have a license.
Thank you for your public comment.
Somebody's getting kickbacks and money. We're going to get an investigation of the bar because I believe the bar is involved.
Your time has concluded.
Thank you very much.
Are we, anything else on that item? You have enough?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to our next item. Item 6.3, Discussion Regarding the Roadmap to Recommendation of the Future Bar Exam. We are joined by Donna and Cody.
Donna Hershkowitz, Chief of Admissions. In, in light of the challenges that were experienced and the criticisms that were received with regard to both the content and the administration of the February 2025 California Bar Exam, the Committee of Bar Examiners, the Board of Trustees, and the California Supreme Court are revisiting the analysis of what, of what bar exam should be administered in 2028 and beyond. So the materials that you had for today included a lengthy slide deck that highlighted for you what was discussed with the Committee of Bar Examiners about the different exam, bar exam options that have so far been under consideration. I hadn't intended to go through the entirety of the, of that slide deck, but I did want to make sure that you had all of the information and could look at it, hopefully maybe have looked at it prior, prior to this discussion, so you could, could get all of the information that, that we've presented so far about those different options. But yesterday morning, I, I had a revelation and decided to completely revamp my plan for what we would be discussing today. And that, that plan and the sort of the, the, the fact of the decision to follow a new plan was reinforced for me yesterday and throughout, throughout the day as the discussions unfolded. I had been talking to a bar exam stakeholder yesterday morning about the many decisions that the board needs to make and the different public comments that you have received, some from those concerned about bar exam fees. You received a written public comment from the LA County Bar Association arguing to stay the course and maintain a bar exam that gives you flexibility for different kinds of options and frequencies. And then we've got the comments that we've learned from the law school deans, and, and the, what we, what I've seen is obviously that this input that you've gotten from these different stakeholders points in one direction from some and point in another direction from, for others. So today, what we're going to do is specifically hone in on what you're being asked to decide between now and May 2026. And we will talk in a minute about why that, that deadline. I am not planning on spending much time around the specific elements of each of the models. You can read that information in the staff report and the documents that are linked within that. You'll see here that I, I have an aspirational hope here, which is that we begin sort of developing a consensus around a general direction. I don't really expect that to happen today, but, but part of why I raise that is, as you'll see as we move through our conversation today, is the high-level option one, option two, option three is the, is just the first of many decisions that need to be made, depending on which direction you go in, all by May 2026. And so we need to start figuring out what direction we're moving in so we know what some of the supplemental decisions are that we're going to be making. So before we get into that, sort of that discussion about what the key tasks are and the decisions for you to make between now and May, I just wanted to give a quick recap on how we got to where we are sitting here today. So we were on a path to development of a new California bar exam. We envisioned a, an extensive bar exam development effort. We were looking at an innovative exam that, you know, potentially included things like gamified assessments, simulations, looking at sort of a comprehensive five-year-plus exam development effort. This came from a recommendation from the Blue Ribbon Commission to the Supreme Court, and what they were weighing at the time was, do we want a California-specific exam or do we want to go with NextGen, NCBE's NextGen Uniform Bar Exam? Now, this decision, the recommendation by the Blue Ribbon Commission was made in May of 2023, at a time we knew less about the NCBE's NextGens, certainly by a lot than we do now, but they made that recommendation. And in October 2024, the Supreme Court adopted that recommendation and made some modifications and suggested the types of, the content, the subject areas and the skills that should be tested on a California-specific exam. But then, then we moved, moved on to our February 2025 bar exam, and obviously, there are, there were a lot of lessons that we took away from that February exam. The, and the, and the February, the February exam, you know, taught us a lot, and it has started this discussion that we engaged in with you all starting this past May. CBE and the board adopted a slate of high-level guiding principles to help identify the most critical considerations for moving forward with the bar exam. But perhaps the most important of those is that we get it right. And we, we cannot be in a, in a position where we announce what we are planning to do for July 2028 or February 2028 and beyond and then not be able to deliver it. So we must, we must get it right. This is really an opportunity for us to apply lessons learned and develop, develop new recommendations. And I want to be clear, and this is consistent with what we have heard repeatedly from, from the Supreme Court liaison and that we liaise with, the staff liaises with, that we are not restricted by the, by the order that was issued by the Supreme Court in October 2024. This is, this is the time to learn, learn lessons from February and make some, some reevaluation and determine if we want to go forward on the path that we were on or do something different. And also, just sort of in, in that same vein of, you know, sort of relevant background information, but, you know, maybe a bit of an aside here, but I do want to make sure that as we move forward in our conversations, and in response to some of the conversation that, that you all had yesterday, I want to make sure that if what is moving, moving you to suggest a particular option among the several options that you'll be, you'll be to suggest a particular option among the several options that you'll be you'll be debating is that a remote exam is cheaper, I do want to make sure that you're remembering the whole picture of what we had discussed about the cost. I when the Board was originally discussing the remote option for 2025, we were estimating a roughly $4.1 million savings between what the remote exam would be and what the what exams in person, if I remember those numbers correctly. But if you will recall, we did learn that the initial pricing for the February exam didn't include costs related to testing accommodations, which which increased the cost of that exam. In addition, we provided additional in-person test centers, which increased the cost of that exam. And finally, the and sort of in a sort of bigger context, the costs that we had originally contracted for when we were thinking that we would continue with that vendor for a July 2025 exam did not include nearly enough ability for to handle to handle the volume of test takers that we would need to be testing remotely. We were working on bringing a contract amendment to the Board that would be an additional $2.2 or $2.3 million to cover the costs of July. That's not to say the remote isn't cheaper, but I do want to make sure that we're not latching on to that initial $4.1 million savings. What I can say now is, I don't know how much cheaper it is. That would be that has to be part of the exploration that that we engage engaged in. So you you've received you received some public comment, I think primarily written public comment, that encourages you to slow down. It says, why is the Board acting so quickly? The Blue Ribbon Commission met for two years to come up with their recommendations. And even though we've discussed this before, I do feel like the points on this slide cannot be reiterated enough. The exam that is being administered that we are administering today, the MBE produced by the National Conference of Bar Exam, National Conference of Bar Examiners, along with our California Essays and Performance Test, will no longer be an option after February 2028. The MBE goes away after February 2028. So for July 2028, we must be we must do something different. We have no choice. We have to do something different than what we are doing today. Statutorily, we have notice requirements. Under Business and Professions Code Section 6046.6, we must give two years' notice if there's going to be an alteration to the bar exam, if there's an alteration that that if there's a change in the bar exam that that requires substantial modification to the training or preparation that is required for passage of the exam. We have to give two-year notice if we are going to switch to a remote administration, and we have to give 18 months' notice if we're not going to substantially, if we're not going to change the exam in a way that substantially modifies the training or preparation required for passage, but does change the vendor, so if we were to return to Kaplan. In addition, we have an analysis that is required by New Rule of Court 9.6B that requires us to conduct an analysis before we make a substantial modification in in the bar exam that that we are going to to be administered. So we cannot make a decision today that says tomorrow this is the bar exam or that we are going to be to be doing. We have to we have to complete that analysis, and that is something that we are working with and are presenting to the to the Committee of Bar Examiners, a a sort of beginning draft of in a couple of weeks. We'll be bringing back a full draft to this Board and the Committee of Bar Examiners in January. And we are on a path to that that puts us on a path that would require the Board to make its final develop its final recommendation, adopt its final recommendation in May at their May meeting, so we could get that to the court for the court's action. Because what all of these notice requirements mean is that we need to provide notice in July 2026 about the exam that will be administered in February 2028, if we're just changing the the vendor of the multiple choice and nothing else, or to be administered in July 2028 if we are changing anything more that would require that substantial modification to the training and preparation that was required. And as we'll talk about in just a few moments, that is more than just the high-level option of what we're going to do. We will need to recommend, and the Supreme Court will need to specify in its order, the content that is to be tested, that is, the subject matters that will be tested, the question types, and a variety of other key decisions will all have to go to the Supreme Court so that we can provide that notice of of in general what the exam is going to look like in two years' time if there is that change. So here's where I really started to deviate from the presentation that I had originally posted, and we will be posting, by the way, this revised presentation after this meeting. But here's where I started to deviate from it. As a quick reminder, though, we have talked about three different options, and we will in a few minutes sort of take another look at these another way, we may be able to sort of characterize them as seven different options. But we have have talked about three different options. Option one, what we've been calling the new exam, which is the road that we were on, right? We were pursuing a comprehensive new California-specific bar exam and using the the multiple-choice questions and the California Essays and Performance Tests that are being developed under the contract with Kaplan Exam Services. So that's option one, return to what we had been doing, what we had been planning prior to February 2025. Option two, adopting NCBE's Next Gen Uniform Bar Exam. And option three, what we're calling a streamlined exam, and this is based on the model of what is being done by Nevada, where they are creating an exam that is a 100 multiple-choice questions, which are administered with it, you can take that after a year and a half of law school, and then subsequently, they are doing just performance tests and then a short supervised practice program. And so here's where we start honing in on all of the decisions that need to be made and where the May timeline starts to sound somewhat aggressive, though necessary. And I apologize that this is so small. These decision decision tree slides are in the original presentation that was posted, so so perhaps it's easier to see them there. So this is first the decision tree regarding the new exam. And there are perhaps, not perhaps, there are here the fewest additional decisions that would need to be made by May 2026 if this were the option that you were to select. It is the most extensive exam development effort that would need to happen, but there would be fewer options because it is the path we were on. It would be just switching the vendor for the multiple-choice questions. That's the notice that we would need to be giving while we while we develop this new exam. At when we are two years out from being able to deliver that exam, that's when we would give notice about the components of that new exam that would be delivered. So there are extensive exam development efforts that would need to happen, but such as, you know, creating we'd create appropriate governance and a governance and oversight structure, have, you know, necessary steering committees, we do an RFP to contract with exam development efforts, we develop the content, validate the content. And with this, as well as anything else that requires us to develop content, we are also sort of making a decision, if this is the direction we're going in, that there will be ongoing content development and content validation efforts for as long as we we deliver our own California-specific exam. This is not a one-time development effort. We have to develop contact content continually to be able to deliver the exam, to not expose the questions, and we have to validate that, and we have an obligation under statute and rule of court every seven years to do a content validation study and a standard study to set the cut score and to ensure to do a practice analysis and ensure that the exam that we are delivering is is the right exam. Moving on to what we had, what is the adoption of the Next Gen Uniform Bar Exam, other decisions, so if if this were the direction that that the committee and the Board would go in, there are other questions that you would need to ask yourselves, that we would need to answer and present, should should there be a California-specific component? Next Gen is planned for a day and a half. Some jurisdictions are adding a local component on that on the the back half of that second day. Other jurisdictions may have a local component that that happens at a completely different time. And part of the that decision depends on what you are trying to accomplish with that local component. If it is a test of minimum competence, like the rest of the bar exam, then you would probably want a to have it on the second day, so it would continue to be a fully fully proctored exam. If you are trying to instill concepts about some of the things that we want to make sure people know, maybe it's some of the subject areas that the Supreme Court had mentioned in their October order that they want tested that aren't being tested on Next Gen, so employment law, administrative law and procedure. We want to instill those concepts and understand ensure that people can sort of identify the basic concepts, maybe we do something like a a much more robust version of our existing new attorney training, which is online and is sort of like a an MCL-E. There it's, right, there's a script, there are knowledge checks, maybe it's just an online multiple-choice question test on a couple of subject areas. There are a variety of things, so you need to determine what's the point of your of doing your local component, and that will help guide what that will look like. If if we are doing a local component, what subject matters would be tested, we would need to develop a content map for each of those subject matters. So not just we're going to test employment law, but what what areas are we going to test within employment law? All of that would need to be determined so we could give that appropriate two-year notice. And is it going to be in person or remote? What question types are we going to use to test those different subject matters? And 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 things such as that. And again, as we mentioned on the first slide, if there is a local component, then that is something that we will have to continue doing content development efforts. If it is more of that sort of more robust new attorney training, more robust MCL-E or other kind of test, then that ongoing content development will be less extensive and easier to produce. Looking at the Nevada model, again, there are several things that the Board would need to recommend and the and the Supreme Court would need to to specify if we were going to adopt something along the lines of the Nevada model. What subject matters are going to be tested on the multiple choice and the multiple-choice questions? Are we going to leave what we've been doing right up until this point, developing with Kaplan, which are multiple-choice questions based on the same subject matters that have been tested on on the MBE? You know, if we are, then that's a fairly easy transition. We will have a an item bank with the with those questions. If we want to go back to the 12 subject areas that the Supreme Court identified and have California law on on all of those areas, then we would we would engage with a new a new contractor or renegotiate the contract with with Kaplan to have them provide those questions on these additional subject subject matter areas. I had a question, a conversation with them and said, just if this were a direction that the that we were going to settle on, if in July, you learned that that we want to do multiple choice now, in addition to the one the subjects that you have developed, but on California law in these additional areas, when would we be able to start seeing the first set of questions for us to validate? If we tell them in July 2026, we're looking at February 27, March 27, to see that first set of questions on those different subject areas? That we would then take to our content validation panels, we would take to our subject matter experts and validate to ensure that they were appropriate to be asked on the exam. We would need to to determine if we were going to do this test, what are the number of multiple-choice questions that we are going to give? Are we going to do 100 multiple-choice questions like Nevada is? Or do we want to test all 12 subject areas that the Supreme Court mentioned, in which case we should probably do a minimum of 120 multiple-choice questions? What number of performance test questions are we doing, and what's the length of those performance tests? Are we going to do a bifurcated exam like Nevada is doing, or are we going to going to put both elements together in a single sitting? When would each component be be tested if it's bifurcated? Are we comfortable that we can test skills like client counseling through the multiple-choice questions or the performance tests? Or do we need to develop something else to test that skill? The reason I ask that is that's the that's the type of skill that Nevada is testing through their supervised practice component, which I think would be a lot harder to implement in California with the size of our population. But there are, you know, other things we could do. We could do, if we were going to develop a simulation, an online simulation that that somebody would need to do, right? That is something that could be done to test client counseling. And are we certain that we can have all of these elements in place by July 2028? Because if not, then we need to we need to do something as a bridge to get to July 2028, and we will need to announce what that is. So those are the types of questions that that we would need to answer for all of these models. And I just thought it was very important to to lay this out so we really are understanding the scope, the magnitude of what it is that we are being asked to decide here. So there is a heck of a lot to consider, and I understand that, and I wanted to return to your guiding principles and talk about some of the different inputs that you've gotten from stakeholders and the public. So these are the guiding principles that the Board adopted and the on the next page as we continue on. The last one, no, I didn't add it. It got cut off. Somewhere in here, I put I thought I'd put the I put the one that CBE added, but it seems to have gotten cut off. But let's just go over these briefly. Doing it right is more important than doing it fast and doing it cheap. That is your your first guiding principle. These were not in any order, other than the order that we came up with. As you recall, this was sort of a brainstorming session when you developed these. Another guiding principle, delivering a reliable and predictable exam, minimizing risk. Move with caution, phase our rollout, use proven technology with appropriate testing and risk minimization. Deliver an exam that appropriately assesses for minimum competence to practice in California. Exam needs to be accessible, affordable, fair, and equitable for test takers. The lessons from the February 2025 bar exam must be learned before we transition to a remote exam. We want to consider developing an exam that can be delivered on a more frequent basis than two times a year. Caution cannot trump innovation. We should consider have an option which allows us to consider both remote and in-person administration and improving our work with with stakeholders. We also talked about not relying on business as usual to to drive the approach. Consider how the exam can be paid for. And the the Committee of Bar Examiners added, avoid locking the state bar into long-term So in public comment yesterday, you heard from current and future bar applicants that they think you need to be considering a remote exam as that would allow us to keep down the cost of of the application fee for the bar exam. You heard in your public comments from the in your written public comments from LA County Bar Association that you need to do just what we had planned. We need to we need to test California law, we need to test that that allows flexibility for when and how the exam is offered. On the other hand, there is there's input that we received from California law school deans saying that those things are the least important considerations from their perspective. I do want to recommend that you look at Attachment A to the materials that were provided for you, and that is a a complete that is a slide deck that that goes through all of the entirety of that survey and survey responses from the deans. I'm going to highlight a couple of the a couple of those slides here, but I did want to point you to that because I think there are some very interesting perspectives in that, that obviously, as part of our desire to engage with stakeholders and ensure that we are considering the input of stakeholders, that you may want to look at. So this slide's mostly in here for me, so I can look back at the definitions of the questions in case you had any any. questions in case you had any questions here. We presented the deans with a list of factors that the Board and the Committee of Bar Examiners might use in reaching their recommendations about the exam that we need to go forward. And we asked the deans, as to each of those factors, rate them as extremely important, very important, down all the way to not at all important. You'll see that 82% ranked as extremely important or very important that the exam be developed and validated by professional testing experts external to the state bar. And receiving the highest shares of somewhat important or not important at all, we're having an exam that could be scheduled more than five times, scheduled, could be scheduled at different times, at different times than the bar exam is, or more than the current two times per year that the bar exam is offered. Also, again, amongst those that had the highest shares of somewhat unimportant or not important at all, were testing remotely, or testing at small test sites, or having an innovative test design. We also asked them to rank of each of these, which were the top five most important considerations from their perspective? So the top priorities were alignment with knowledge, skills, and abilities required for entry-level practice in California, those use of professional test developers, external, test developers and content validation external to the state bar, access considerations related to cost and access, the portability of the examination score, alignment with what is tested in most bar jurisdictions, and a focus on applied skills. You will see in the complete slide deck that there's a breakdown for each of the school types and how they responded. One of the things that I find particularly interesting is that there is some alignment between the California-accredited law schools and the ABA-approved law schools on some of these factors, and ultimately on their recommendation for which option that they recommend that you will adopt, which we'll turn to on the next slide. But the reference to the portability of the exam score here triggered that for me because we don't yet have decisions from the other jurisdictions on what their policy will be for whether the score from the Next Gen UBE will be portable currently. The, I think, most states that have adopted the multi-state bar exam that's put out by the National Conference of Bar Examiners, your scores are portable. Because it's the same exam, if you take the exam in one state, you can port that score to another state, and if you've met their pass line, then you can be admitted without having to sit for the bar exam. The reason I bring this up is, we would expect that they would have the same portability rules generally, but currently, most other states will only accept into their bar people who have graduated from an ABA-approved law school. And the fact that we've got California-accredited law schools whose students may not be able to benefit from portability, identifying this as an important factor, I think is very The lowest priorities of, again, this is the aggregate slide, right? So the lowest priorities in aggregate were the frequency of administration, the use of remote administration, and innovative design, which really drew little support overall. And this certainly got me thinking that this may be an exercise that we should do with the Board with regard to your guiding principles, and have you identify which of those are the most important, because they're not, you can't implement all of them. There's some inconsistency arguably between and among some of them. And so having you identify which are really the most important may help us hone in on what your recommendation is. Obviously, also what we'll hone in on that is the analysis that we need to prepare as directed by the Supreme Court in the recently adopted rules of court. That analysis will look at the tangible and intangible benefits to the bar and to examinees for implementing the option, the different options. It will look at the direct and indirect costs to the state bar and the examinees for the different options. It will look at whether there are technological changes or new fee requirements that would pose an undue burden on examinees. It asks us to look at the resource implications for staff at the state bar, right? How many staff would take to implement it? And our ability to implement it competently. So those are among the factors that we would be looking at, which will also obviously shape your decision. But making sure that you think about sort of which of your guiding principles are most important, I think, will be a helpful exercise as well. So the slide that I'm showing you actually right now, we asked the deans to rank the future bar exam options. And as you'll see here, we took the three options and broke them down further into seven options. And what you'll recognize here in this slide, that those seven options sort of take some of the questions from the decision tree and build them into the options. And so this is what they're telling us. The highest-ranked option for all law schools, as well as, I'm sorry, the highest-ranked option for all of the law schools was to adopt the NCBE Next Gen with a California-specific component. The next highest option was to adopt Next Gen without a California-specific component. The lower the number, the more preferred the option on this slide.
I missed reading.
Yeah, and I apologize. I should have said that first. So for the California-accredited schools, the most preferred option was adopting Next Gen with a California-specific component. For the ABA law schools, their highest preference was adopting the Next Gen UBE without a California-specific component. I would note that we sent this survey to the deans after we had a conversation with many of them. We've started these quarterly conversations with the deans, and we've broken them up by school types, so we can have conversations about different things that are important to each of them. And the ABA dean said most clearly of anybody that in light of the February exam, they have lost confidence in the state bar to be able to develop content and deliver the exam. And I think that speaks to, in all likelihood, why the selection that they favored most heavily was adopting Next Gen UBE without a California-specific component. The lowest-ranked option for all law schools, for ABA law schools, and for the Cal accredited schools, was stick to the original plan. Developing the new California exam consistent with the October 2024 direction of the Supreme Court. And until that exam is ready, go back to the Kaplan developed multiple-choice questions and the California essays and the performance test. So this is what we're hearing from one stakeholder, a very important stakeholder in this process. And so we wanted to share this information with you as you're making your considerations about this. And what we will be bringing to the January 23 joint meeting of the CBE and the Board of Trustees, in addition to the draft, a draft of the analysis that is directed by the Supreme Court. We are looking to have a roundtable, maybe, we'll work on sort of the length of time, but maybe 30-minute roundtable, with representatives, probably two representatives from each of the three law school types. So you can engage with them and ask them some more questions about the responses on their surveys. We've asked each of the law school types to pick their representatives, so that we are not the ones who are going to be selecting who those voices are that you'll hear from. So in addition to that, I just want to talk about some next steps for you. And the one that's not mentioned here, that I do want to specifically point to, is on December 5, at the Committee of Bar Examiners meeting, we are going to spend three hours talking about the future bar exam. And that presentation is going to be broken up as follows. We are going to start at roughly 11:50 a.m. with a presentation from representatives who are developing the Nevada exam. We will go at 1:20 with a presentation from representatives from the National Conference of Bar Examiners to give us more information about the Next Gen UBE. And we'll wrap up with the last hour, starting at 2:20, with a discussion of the early draft analysis that's required by the rule of court, and further discussion amongst the committee about the different options. So we will be doing that on December 5, between now and then, and between now and when we next get together with you all, we will be doing further analysis into each option. We will be engaging with key stakeholders. And we will be preparing that draft analysis to present to the joint meeting in January with a final analysis to go to the Committee of Bar Examiners after any changes are made based on the January meeting. In March or April, to the Committee of Bar Examiners. And then taking that analysis to the Board in May of 2026, so that you may adopt your final recommendation with all of the component parts, so we can turn that around within a week or two, seeing how Eileen reacts to that, to turn that into a petition to the Supreme Court, because we have to give our notice by July 2026 of what we are going to do. Because again, February 28 is the last opportunity to deliver the exam exactly as we are delivering it today. So this is an aggressive timeline, but it is required. One of the things that you could also do, and it's sort of built into some of those options when we disaggregated those three into seven, you could look at anything as, you know, we'll build a bridge first. And so the only option that we need to, in that instance, that we would need to do is give the 18-month notice, for example, that we want to return to the Kaplan multiple-choice questions and the California essays and performance tests as we've given in the past. That is what we're going to do. We're not going to change the content. We'll give that notice, and then we'll take another year to make the other decisions, and then give the two-year notice about sort of the direction that we want to head in. So that's also an option. And you'll see amongst the other options that we had put before the dean, was using Next Gen as a bridge. Go to Next Gen for a period of time while we develop a California-specific exam. And we actually asked the deans, if we were to do that, what is the minimum number of years that we should stay with Next Gen? Because they may be changing their curriculum, right? To the extent that there's any sort of teaching toward the exam, they have bar preparation and academic success segments of their curriculum. So they'd have to change that. We've got people who are preparing for the exam and may take the exam multiple times. There has to be some continuity and some sort of consistent expectation. And I was actually frankly surprised that, on average, the response was that it would need to be, it would be a little over four years, that we would need to maintain Next Gen before switching to something else. I frankly thought it would be longer. And so that was sort of an interesting response also. If we were to go to Next Gen, that we would probably think of maintaining it, say, for five years while we are adopting a California-specific exam, if, excuse me, if that is a route that you all chose to recommend. And with that, I turn it over to you for a lively discussion.
I have just a quick question. Did you say something about December 5? Or did I?
Yes. So December 5, the Committee of Bar Examiners is meeting, and I really encourage all of you to listen in on that meeting.
Can you just send us that information?
Absolutely. That was the plan for this week's blast to the Board. So yes, you will have that information. I encourage you to listen, because that will be when you can hear directly from the representatives who are developing Nevada and Next Gen.
Great idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for a great presentation. Nothing but a ton of material there and things to consider, but I think it was organized well and done your best to help us start to tackle it. Any comments, questions for Donna? Yes, Trustee Barahona.
Donna, can you just talk about the Supreme Court's recommendation? Again, presuming we choose a specific path that's presented to the Supreme Court, they can ultimately, just to confirm, they can ultimately not choose that path. Is that correct?
So Devin, if you could put the slides back up. There was, I had a couple of slides, just in case there were certain questions. So just so you can see, and I think this may have been embedded in your question, Trustee Barahona, but the Board, CBE will make a recommendation, the Board will make a recommendation, and then the Supreme Court will make its order. The Supreme Court, they are court. They consider information put before them. And so they will look at the analysis that is provided and see if they are convinced that that is the right way to go based on the analysis. They could determine that when they look at the evidence, they would reach a different But importantly, they are expecting us to engage in this analysis and to revisit the decision and to tell them what you think is the right decision to make based on all the information that you have today. The decision, the order that they issued in October 2024 laid out the 12 subject areas that they thought that the exam should cover. And those are listed in the center column on this slide. I've drawn a line after the ones that are in common between what we do currently, what we test currently, what the Supreme Court directed, and what is on Next Gen. Just so you can see where there is similarity and where there are differences. And if you look at some letters that have been submitted in the past to the Board as public comment by deans of ABA law schools, they point out that the doctrinal law that the Supreme Court recommended, that there's significant alignment between that and what is being tested on Next Gen UBE. You'll see, if you look under the line, that in addition to the subjects that are being tested on Next Gen UBE, the Supreme Court is recommending that we also, in California, test administrative law and procedure, employment law, estate planning, trusts and probate, and professional responsibility. And professional responsibility, you'll see, has an asterisk in the Next Gen column, because it is sort of being tested. It is being tested on the performance tests and with an expectation that you possess that knowledge. It won't necessarily be in the file and library that are provided. They are expecting you to understand that, the basic rules of professional responsibility. You may be answering that in a performance test. But so those are some of the differences between the content areas. And then there is greater alignment with the skills and abilities under the new exam as directed by the Supreme Court in their October order and what's on Next Gen. You'll see legal drafting and writing, research and investigation, issue spotting and fact gathering. They're sort of different word choices, but overall, there's significant alignment. Client communication and relationship versus client relationship and management. The one that does not seem to be The one that does not seem to be in alignment is one that was recommended by the Blue Ribbon Commission and and adopted by the Supreme Court, litigation skills.
It would behoove us to get as close to some of the Supreme Court's recommended components.
I think that's, I think that's a choice. I, right, the Supreme Court for adding those, right? And we had conducted a practice analysis or a job analysis in 2020, and that's where the topics came from. The Blue Ribbon Commission adopted the recommendation of the of the California Attorney Practice Analysis Working Group. And the Supreme Court looked back at the working group report and said that they wanted to add those other, those other categories. Again, in our conversations with with our staff liaison to the Supreme Court, the expectation is that we are looking at all of these options once again. And and if part of the analysis is, you know, what what is our, you know, where do we, where do we think we've got the ability to, with confidence, you know, deliver, deliver an effective, accurate exam that tests minimum competence? And if if you were to say, we don't think we can add those extra three topics, right, then that should be your recommendation, and the court would consider the rationale that's provided for that.
Thank you. San Francisco, you can go ahead.
I think we're good now. Sorry. Donna, I know that the Chief Justice was involved in the Blue Ribbon Commission and the Supreme Court liaison was very involved in the Blue Ribbon Commission. I assume that we're ensuring that we get data and analysis that they would want to see as they look at all of this at the back end, you know, the front end, so that we can look at it and CBE can look at it. But just wanted to kind of confirm that.
Yes, absolutely. And I think they did, I mean, we are obviously in frequent communication with our staff liaison. And and I think the the court really laid out what that data is that they want to see in Rule of Court 9.6b, where they identified what needs to be in that, what they refer to as a cost-benefit analysis that are looking at, right? The tangible benefits, intangible benefits, and costs, technology changes that are required, et cetera. But but we are certainly in communication and suggested that we would, that we would relish some feedback after we have the sort of preliminary draft of that analysis to make sure it is giving the court what they need.
Thank you.
Very well explained. What are next steps? Donna, where do we go from here?
This is, this is where, going back to that purpose slide, we begin developing a consensus around a general direction. I don't see that happening, right, so far.
Any thoughts? Go ahead. Vice Chair Tony.
We need the other trustees here to be able to do that. We we have a significant number of trustees absent. That's the challenge here. I think we need to do everything we can to ensure that this discussion includes all 13 trustees because it's that important. And so I'm a little reluctant to go too far with, without everybody's engagement because I, that's my reluctance.
And and even if everyone was here, right, we had, we developed a schedule that, right, we brought this to to you all sort of jointly with CBE in August. We had a conversation with CBE in October, sharing with you now the materials that we shared with CBE in October and having this conversation with you. We're back to CBE in December, talking about it for three hours. We're with you jointly, CBE and the Board jointly, in January. So we do have a plan to come to you several times and come to the CBE even more so. But but that plan did, the, that schedule had us coming to you next in January with the with the draft analysis, consistent with the requirements of the Supreme Court rule, and then after that, back to you in May for the final decision. So I do want to put that out there in case there is a feeling like there will need to be another meeting between, between January and May.
San Francisco.
Yeah, I just had, I had a couple of thoughts on this. One is, isn't, isn't another issue here reciprocity? What I heard, or what I saw in the bar exam, the dean's responses was a desire for portability of the scores. And I think there's a question of, California is one of the least, if not the least portable license in the United States right now. And certainly, adopting the NextGen exam, you know, gives people a portable score. So I think there's, there's a consideration there that is, that is at least relevant to some degree. Number two, I would not underestimate the task involved in replacing the MBE, which has been around for, well, I mean, I took the MBE, that was decades ago. So I think that's a, that's a tall order, which also somewhat argues for adopting the NextGen exam. And my third point would be, I think, in addition to the the various things that you listed that are, that are important factors here, having a seamless transition to the new exam, whatever that's going to be, is absolutely essential, both in terms of how it's advertised, how it's promoted, how it's executed. And if that's, and with that factor in mind, that argues for staying the course and doing the California exam, option one, or going with something that exists and has been adopted by, what, three-quarters of the states right now? I mean, what is, I mean, I don't know what the NextGen adoption is, but it's high. I know that.
We're at 48 jurisdictions now.
There you go.
I'm sorry, 47 jurisdictions now. New Jersey just adopted, so 47.
Yeah, that argues strongly for one or, one or two. And I'll state my preference. My general, my general preference is without, you know, at this point in time, without all the data in, is the, you know, the NextGen exam sounds like, sounds like a very seamless solution.
Thank you. Trustee Sewell.
I think all I'm just going to say is that, given what we experienced in February, I know that this is one of the most important and pressing issues that is sort of facing this body. I do have some, some thoughts and ideas about, I guess, maybe the more administrative contours of the, of the exam. But I, I'm not a lawyer, and I've never taken the bar exam. And so I am really going to be looking to my colleagues on the Board who are lawyers, who are practicing, who have gone through the experience of law school to really help to, help us to understand what is needed in order to to test the knowledge as well as the sort of the proficiency of folks that have, that are going to be going through this examination process. And so, like I said, I do have some ideas, but I really am going to pay an awful lot of deference to to those that are practicing and that have taken this test.
Thank you, Trustee. Any other comments? Donna, I just want to say, I think this is an excellent discussion that you've led us through today. I must admit, in my heart of hearts, I'm still passionate about the idea of convenience for test takers, which remote would allow, and it looks like is not in the cards anywhere with the national exam. But at the same time, I think, as we've all learned by now, that's a huge task, a huge task to stand up our own exam. And to your very important point, Donna, continue to re-standing it up year after year after year after year after year at considerable, considerable work and likely considerable cost. And until we know that, I think, until I know more about how doable and costly and possible that is, it steers me back towards the more reliable solution, but I look forward to further conversations. Unless anybody has anything else, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you very much. Trustee Barahona.
Yeah, I, I think I just want to, it feels important to underscore what Donna has asked for, which is getting closer to a, a direction point. Because without that, it feels like that will impact staff's timeline and sort of approach. And I understand Vice Chair Tony's point on, we need more voices in the room, but I would, I would, given the, the importance of moving this forward, we, I don't know if this was the consideration on adding additional meetings throughout the course of the year. And from a cadence standpoint, if adding additional, an additional meeting or so to continue this conversation, it feels like a significant amount of information to digest. And we may need additional meetings as a board to have the right discussions so that we can get closer to this direction point on the sooner side, it feels like. Donna, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it does feel like, without that sort of sense of direction, even of the three options, could we narrow to two top choices or, or, you know? It just feels like we need to, we need to think about as a board how we're going to help meet that need and try to advance this sort of direction request. And that might mean additional meetings. But again, from a cadence standpoint, Donna and team might be best to answer that.
Yeah, I think, I think the importance of honing in sort of on the highest, on the high-level option is so we can know, we can start thinking about all of the decision points underneath it because it will be very difficult, I think, to draft, to, to come up with all of those decision points underneath every option. And so having a sense of which option that everybody would be going in would help refine staff's efforts to conduct the research, do the analysis, present to you what you need in order to make the final decision. So yeah, I, so I don't know if you feel like you would need sort of more, you know, more time, some, you know, an additional meeting between the January meeting and the May meeting in order to keep honing that, that, that direction.
Vice Chair Tony.
Trustee Barahona, I really appreciate you bringing up this question. I know for myself, like Trustee Sewell and some of the rest of us who are not attorneys, I need a lot more information to have a strong opinion about it. I'm not one that's lacking of strong opinions, but this is not one that I feel like I know enough. And I'm going to go to the December 5th presentation, okay, so that I can learn more. It makes a difference for me to hear from people who know more than I do on areas that I really don't know a lot about. And if, what I would suggest is just a, if if there can be not just the weekly board update, but like a separate email from staff encouraging all Board members to go to that just as a special, because if we can, that'd be great. But if it turns out that not many of us can make it, I'd suggest that we consider replicating that kind of presentation for the Board that the CBE is getting. I, I think that'd be something that'd be beneficial. I want to feel like I'm making an informed decision, and I need more input to do that.
I just want to be clear, that December 5th meeting is not a joint meeting with the CBE.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so you would just be in the attendee pool, watching the presentation.
Right. We don't ask questions in that one. I'm just clarifying.
Yes, San Francisco.
Oh, I was just going to say, I believe the December 5th meeting should be recorded. So for those of us who can't make it, and I can't, I have a conflict, I can watch the recording at my leisure. And I think typically, I don't know what the timing is, but typically it's up, you know, within a few days, so.
Staff here is confirming that's the case, so thank you very much for mentioning that. All right. Unless there's anything else, thank you very much, Donna. Next is item 6.4, reconsideration of the proposed in-person supervision requirement for law office study, proposed amendments to State Bar Rule 4.29 relating to law office study, request for adoption, approval, and submission to the Supreme Court. This item is being presented by Tara Clark. And Ashley Sylvia Guzman.
Let's see. I see Ashley is joining us. So thank you, trustees. So I'll give a very brief overview, and then I will throw it over to Ashley, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee of Bar Examiners, to discuss a little bit more of the reasoning for the, from the committee. So as a reminder, these rules were last before you at your September meeting. They came forward with the practical training of law students. The Board ultimately asked the committee to reconsider the in-person requirements in the proposed rules. So as a reminder, the rules require 120 synchronous hours for each six-month study period. So those, the 120 can be conducted either remote video technology or in-person. Of those 120, right now, the minimum required hours of in-person supervision are 10 hours. And so the Board had asked that the committee consider whether to move that percentage up to 30%, which would be 36 hours, or 50%, which is 60 hours. So the committee considered the Board's request at their October meeting. And after a robust discussion, they did decide to put forward the recommendation to stay with the 10 hours to maintain the flexibility of the program. And then if I can, very briefly, we just wanted to share some demographics of the program to give you a brief overview of who it is that we see. And you can see the PowerPoint.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So as you may be aware, the law office study is an alternate pathway for applicants to gain a legal education in California. So they conduct their legal education for four years under the supervision of a licensed attorney or a judge. And so you can see, it is a diverse population for race and ethnicity, for gender. It is about 57% female, which mirrors roughly the makeup of our schools. And age, which may be intuitive or not, normally, the law school attendees are in their 20s. So here, we do see a little bit of an older population. It may be that law is their second career. For the past several years, since 2020, we've had 338 total participants, average per year is about 60. And of those, 49 of them have come on to become attorneys already, so some are continuing in the program. Let's see. And so just so you're aware as well, we did want to point out that the, for the Cal-accredited law schools, 13 of our 16 Cal's do offer fully remote G D programs. So this was another consideration for the committee to, to maintain the minimum number of in-person hours at 10. And they did also ask that we point out that if the supervisor or the student do believe that more in-person hours are required, that that can be done within the rules. Okay. And for timing sake, I'm going to go ahead and throw it over to Ashley.
Hi, all. So happy to join you all today. I wanted to come as basically just the opinion of the Committee of Bar Examiners and to give you a little bit of insight into how I wanted to come as basically just the opinion of the Committee of Bar Examiners and, and to give you a little bit of insight into how we had approached this subject and had the discussion to maintain the 10-hour proposal. I'll keep it fairly brief. I think that the written materials that came along with this agenda item go into it in pretty heavy detail, but there were a number of key considerations that led the Committee of Bar Examiners to, to decide on the 10 hours and to maintain that 10 hours. Mostly that the program is intended to be an alternative education option for applicants to access the legal field without attending a traditional law school. For that reason, one of the bigger considerations was making the program accessible and comparable to a law classroom option. The California Correspondents and, or distance learning schools can provide fully remote education and their students take the bar. An increase from the 10-hour proposal for in-person requirements for the law office study program would, we believe, make the program less effective for the participants in it and take away some of the key benefits of engaging in that program. As we've seen, the majority of the law office study participants are non-traditional students. Many may be seeking a second career. The cost of law school can be prohibitive for some of these applicants who are seeking alternative options to becoming licensed attorneys. We believe that the law office study program also is more diverse than the, than most law schools, as we saw in those, in those numbers. For that reason, we felt maintaining the affordability and accessibility of the program was essential. As it stands, the 10-hour, the 10-hour requirement allows a participant to bookend a Friday and a Monday, if that's what they so choose, and to travel for the program and to remain remote the remainder of the hours. They're getting the same quality of education and engagement that they would be from, that they would be obtaining in a traditional standard law school setting, while also maintaining the benefit of those remote hours, which do have to be provided over a video platform as opposed to a phone call or something that's less engaging. In addition, and lastly, the traditional law school setting may not be as accessible to applicants, and the law office study program offers an alternative for these applicants to access law practice. By retaining the 10 hours, it reduces the need, the potential need for accommodations for applicants over an increased period of time, which can add burden to any disabled applicants who may be seeking this type of program for that exact reason. And so those, there were a number of other considerations that the Committee of Bar Examiners handled and went through and, and deciding. We believe that the 10 hours is effective, but I can be present to answer any questions about what the reasoning looks like. Or, you know, answer any general questions as needed.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to trustees. Any comments or questions? Yes, San Francisco.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak up because I was pretty vociferous at the last meeting that I thought 10 hours was insufficient. And I've had my mind changed in the interim. I got some additional information between our last, um, meeting and today. Primarily the demographic data that suggests that it's a second career, that this is a non-traditional law school population, the accessibility concerns and everything else, so I'm prepared, you know, while I, I'm not like a huge fan of remote learning in general, I'm prepared to defer to the CBE on this and support it. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there is no other comments, we are looking for a motion in a second.
I'd like to move the motion.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Motion by Vice Chair Tony, was it? Grande? Second by Trustee Grande. Roll call, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Or? Not present. Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With nine i's and zero n's, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, discussion and approval of the five-year sunset review sub-entity recommendations for the California Board of Legal Specialization and Client Security Fund. It's being presented by Erica Doherty.
Thank you, Chair. So to kind of set the stage, so this is something that has come to the board several different times over frankly, the past several years. So as you may recall, beginning in 2018, excuse me, the board was expected to do a five-year review of all of the state bar subentities that the board has authorization to create to evaluate whether or not those subentities were serving their functions, whether there should be any changes to what the work of those subentities, and also as well as to whether to eliminate those subentities. This work commenced in 2023 and has been evaluated for some time now. The two outstanding items relate to proposed recommendations regarding the California Board of Legal Specialization, CBLS, and the Client Security Fund Commission. Back in May of this year, it was presented to the board, or I'm sorry, presented to the executive committee that those two subentities should be sunset. It was not moved forward at that time by the Board of Trustees. And what was indicated to the board that this would come back in the fall of this year. I'm going to point out that since that time, staff has done some additional conversations with other staff to determine the workloads associated with sunsetting these, because two things were going to happen. And a lot has frankly changed over the past couple of years and months related to this. So CBLS, the Board of Legal Specialization, was planned to move a lot of its functions either to staff or to the Committee of Bar Examiners. The CSF Committee, if sunset, most of that work was going to be moved to the Board of Trustees through two liaisons making decisions. And ultimately, some of those decisions would come to the board for final approval. And then a possibility of having additional, um, a possibility of hearings coming to the board as well. Given these facts, and frankly, given the fact that the Committee of Bar Examiners and the board are required to make a lot of very significant decisions in the bar exam space right now. And also given the fact that there is going to be limited staff impact on the sunset of these two subentities, it would have mostly been with our appointments team as opposed to the people doing the substantive work. Staff is now reversing course and recommending that we retain these two subentities at least for now. And then once CBE and the board perhaps have less work to do in the bar exam space, that we revisit that. So this would be a three-year recommendation to revisit CBLS and the CSF Committee. And then we would continue the normal five-year subentity review process for the other subentities. So bringing these two back in 2028 and bringing the others back in 2030. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Erica, I think I'm just going to ask you to repeat the last two paragraphs again, because this is almost like a 180, right?
It is, yes. And so we really did take a look, the, you know, the staff leads for these two committees took a look and evaluated the work levels that are associated with them and what work would be, you know, sent to staff, what work would be sent to other subentities or to the board itself, CBE and the board. And really determined that it was kind of a shifting of work around and moving it to others as opposed to an actual elimination of work. There are some cost savings that could be associated with this, because as you know, we do for our subentities allow for two in-person meetings per year. Frankly, it's a drop in the bucket. You know, most of these subentities don't use their entire travel budget anyways. And it, we're talking, you know, less than $10,000. What I do think is significant is just the additional work that would be put on CBE and the board as well. And then, as I mentioned, what we would discuss is accelerating the next subentity review process for CBLS and the CSF Committee, just to see if things have changed and the board and CBE have more bandwidth to take these things on in the future.
Thank you for that explanation. And if there are no other board members who have comments, I'm prepared to move the item.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, or do I hear a second?
Second.
Great. Motion by Trustee Soell, second by Vice Chair Tony. Roll call, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Good? Good?
Aye.
Or, not present. Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With nine i's and zero n's, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a discussion item on the update on the status of the California State Auditor Open Recommendations pending for more than one year. The item is being presented by Lila Hyde from the Office of Compliance.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lila Hyde and I lead the Office of Compliance. And today I will provide an update on the status of open recommendations from prior performance audits of the state bar conducted by the California State Auditor. As you all know, the Board of Trustees contracts with the California State Auditor to conduct biennial performance audits of the state bar's operations. And like all audited entities, the state bar is required to provide annual updates to the California State Auditor regarding recommendations that are not fully implemented after more than one year following the issuance of state audit reports. Since we last reported to you on pending recommendations, the state bar resolved nine of the 10 open recommendations requiring an annual response to the auditor. And the remaining open recommendation comes from an auditor report issued in April 2021. The report findings stated that the state bar's changes to its discipline system reduced that system's efficiency. And the auditor recommended that the state bar assess the impact of its discipline system reorganization and determine whether additional changes to its organizational structure are warranted. And just as a reminder, this finding refers to organizational changes that were made prior to 2021. And since then, the state bar has made additional organizational changes up through and including July of this year in light of the voluntary reduction in force. And these organizational changes are ongoing as our internal procedural changes with the goal of increasing efficiency. After reviewing our 2024 response, the auditor requested more data to assess the impact of recent organizational changes over time. So in our response this year, the state bar provided data from the 2025 Annual Discipline Report, most of which you saw yesterday, showing how organizational changes have worked to improve case processing efficiency. And our full response to the auditor can be found in your staff report. And that's it for me. I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Lila. Very, very nice. Any questions for Lila on this matter? Hearing none. This is a discussion item. Thank you very much for your help today. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the report of action taken by the Contracts Committee approving specified contracts. Justin.
Thank you very much. This is an informational item. It's bringing back the results of the Contracts Committee that were taken place on October 14th of 2025, and then also that took place on November 7th of 2025. To remind the board, the Contracts Committee has been delegated authority to approve contracts in between board meetings when necessary. And the contracts that were approved at the October 14th meeting, some of them had to do with extension of the Office of, or the 2201 program, Special Deputy Trial Counsel. There was a contract for General Services that was a critical replacement of end-of-life compressors. And then there was a strategic communications contract to, for post-launch support on the website. In addition to some admissions contracts for the February 2025 bar exam. On the meeting of November 7th, it was heavily admissions-related and it had many different testing centers approvals. And then there was some contracts for IT, for an IT consultant. And then there was a General Services contract that related to some of our insurance and an IT contract related to our learning management system to help implement some things. I'm happy to answer any questions we have on this item.
Thank you very much, Justin. Any questions? This is a discussion item only. Yes, Vice Chair Tony.
I know that this has already gone to the Contracts Committee, because I serve on the Contracts Committee. But the questions I have have been inspired by public comment who has, you know, a lot of people asking, what is the state bar doing to, you know, work hard to reduce expenses? And so, you know, based upon the review of the public comments for this meeting, I, I do have some questions. So I'm going to start off with number one, the General Services, the Conica Minolta contract for the multifunctional printer lease.
Trustee Tony?
Yeah.
This is the report back, the next item is the Contracts item, and I'll give you a presentation on those, those items. This was a little shorter because we, we'd kind of already talked about it thoroughly at the Contracts Committee meeting, but the next item.
Is the next item going to do the same thing then?
I'm going to give a more thorough explanation, because we, at the Contracts Committee, we discussed all of the.
Let's find it. Sorry.
No problem.
No problem.
Any other questions? Or we'll move on to the next item. Which is again you, Justin, as you just mentioned. Item 6.8, Approval of Specified Contracts Pursuant to Business Professions Code, Section 6, 008.6. Justin, take it away.
All right. I will now provide a brief overview of the items that are contained in the Contracts item that we are seeking approval for, for this one. Item one concerns the copier used at the state bars, San Francisco and Los Angeles offices. The current contract was executed in 2019, and if approved, this will be the final year of the agreement. The Office of General Services will issue an RFP next year to obtain new copier services. This year, staff negotiated an $850 a month reduction in the lease that will ultimately result in $10,200 savings from prior year lease amounts. Obtaining similar new copiers at the time would increase the costs by approximately $87,000 a year, which is why staff recommended extending the lease for one more year. These copiers are towards their end of life, so we will not be able to extend the lease next year and will have to incur that increased cost. The second item is related to our UPS shipping. The UPS uses Sourcewell, which is a public agency that provides cooperative purchasing contracts to governments, education, and nonprofits. By using them, the state bar obtains favorable, favorable rates with UPS, currently about a 40% discount from normal rates. And this increase is just increasing the amount based on expected use. Item three is the security officers for our San Francisco building. Even though we are only a tenant, we still need security for our courtrooms, floors. Item four is LexisNexis, which is the legal research and information services that our OCTC and Office of General Counsel use. Items five and six are for outside counsel related to specific matters, one a bankruptcy court matter, and the other related to services with our cybersecurity insurance. Items seven through 12 are our Special Deputy Trial Counsel contracts for 2026. This is our 2201 program. Items 13 through 17 are admissions-related and related to the exam. Item 13 is the MBE for the February 2026 exam. Items 14 and 15 are for the agencies we use to proctor the exams for February 2026. Item 16 is for Prometric, which is the online administration of the June 2026 first-year law students exam. Item 17 is for ACS Ventures to provide psychometric services. The state bar issued an RFP for psychometric services to support both the pre- and post-examination phases of several of our exams. After a thorough review by the scoring team from that RFP, which is still on our website if anybody wants to go out and look at, and the scoring team included the Chair and the Vice Chair of the CBE, ACS Ventures was selected as the highest scorer. These services include calibrating the grading, conducting greater analysis, and preparing analysis of exam results. The work covers two, both the bar examinations, also the first-year law student examinations. The work covers two, both the bar examinations, also the first-year law student examinations, and the legal specialization examination that is given biannually. Item 18 is for AT&amp;T, which is our telecommunications services providers. This is the state bar's phone provider and internet provider. And that's what that's associated with. Item 19 is Inteltrace, which is a secure internet connection that we have between San Francisco and our LA offices. There are some things that we do not want to put on the public internet. And this also gives us a backup in case anything goes wrong with AT&amp;T, we still are able to continue our operations. Item 20 is HubSpot. We do our best to anticipate the costs for these invoices, but after a true-up, and this is our mass email provider, when we trued up, we needed an additional $825 and that's why that request is here. Item 21 is our annual cost for our AIM systems, which admissions uses for applicant processing and grading. Item 22 is Sikich, which is for enhancements in the AIM systems. The goal is to improve processes and eliminate the need for some staff, eliminate the need for some staff involvement through automation. Item 23 is Crayon Software, who provides Microsoft licenses. This is another true-up. The board already approved $347,000 for this vendor and we're asking an additional $10,000 based on use. The next couple of items are the IT contractors. There are very specific things and I won't go over each individual contractor, but those are items 24, 25, and 26. And then item 27 is Firstfire Consulting, who provides software for the state bar's contact center. This contract includes usage fees. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you very much, Justin. Any questions on this matter?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry I jumped the gun, got confused on the agenda items, but I don't have any further questions.
If there are no other questions, we'll need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Bonaventura?
A second.
Second by Vice Chair Tony. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Bonaventura?
Aye.
Good? Not present. Gore? Not present. Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soel?
Okay.
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Justin. We have one more item, 6.9, request for approval and adoption of proposed changes to the schedule of charges and deadlines. Araceli, welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning, Still. This item has been presented to the Finance Committee yesterday and it is the request for approval and adoption of the schedule of charges and deadlines. This is a annual agenda item that we bring forth usually in November. And it is, I don't have a presentation, it's all in the agenda, there's several attachments, but it basically just summarizes or lists all of the fees that we charge, the amounts and the related rules for each fee that we do charge. I just want to highlight a few of the key points in my agenda. So the licensing fee will remain the same as prior year. In Tables 1 and Tables 2, it summarizes the active and the inactive breakout. So we will continue to charge a maximum of $598 for actives. There is a $45 out option there and for inactives, it'll be $205. So that's consistent with what we charged in prior years. As the board policy in place, we do apply a CPI, a CPI adjustment to all of the fees where we are, where we have the authority to apply the CPI. Certain ones that we're not, we don't have the authority to do so, but if we do, we have applied them and that's documented or you will see it in attachments, C and Attachment A, which is the red line. Just a couple of items in here I want to highlight. One of the changes we're highlighting or that I would like to highlight in this agenda is just updates on the law corporations and LLP renewal applications. We are moving the deadline or we are proposing to move the deadline for the renewal cycles. And particularly set October 2nd as a deadline, after which late fees will be assessed for law corps and LLPs. And thereafter, 60 days following the notice of that delinquency as the deadline, after which a firm can be suspended. So that's the key change there. Two more items. There will be an update to the legal specialization fee. The legal specialization program certifies licensed sales legal specialists. There is an item coming up later today, item 6.14, that we'll go into more detail. But essentially, this item will consider amendments to Rule 3.114, which will be to request to authorize a new non-compliance fees for those who fail to timely complete their specialty continuing legal education. And then MFA fees, which is mandatory fee arbitration. There's also an upcoming agenda item, item 6.13, that will discuss a new fee mediation compensation rate for this program and also simplified fee refund schedule. So it's a little bit of a structure to the MFA fees. But again, that'll be highlighted in an agenda item coming up. And the admissions fees that we discussed yesterday, those are also included in here. And I just want to highlight that the resolution in here makes sure that the changes that the board approved yesterday will be reflected in the schedule accordingly. And that's all I have on this item.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Or a motion?
I'm prepared to move the item.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. A motion by Trustee Soel, second by Trustee Barahona. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Bonaventura?
Aye.
Good? Not present. Gore? Not present. Grande?
Aye.
Harrison? Not present. Huser not present. Giorgiello?
Zane.
Soel?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With seven ayes and one nay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Araceli, you're still with us.
I am still.
For the next item, approval of the 2025 Quarter III Financial Statements Report.
Sure.
Yes.
Just on the last vote, was it, was there, there was actually a nay or was it an abstention?
I heard a nay from Trustee Giorgiello and.
That's abstention. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So that would be seven ayes and zero nays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yes. So this item, I do have a quick presentation on the numbers. And this is the results for the Quarter III Financial Statements. Again, this was presented to the Finance Committee yesterday, so some of board members have already seen this. So I will first start with the revenue highlights. And at the far end, you will see that our total bar-wide operating revenue is above budget by over $10 million. And the makeup of that surplus is all the funds you see listed here. So first, I'll start with the general fund, which is over budget by five point, just under 5.5 million. Most of that really is just mandatory fees, which have exceeded our budget, as well as non-compliance or late fees that we've also incurred. We expect mandatory fees, or as of September, mandatory fees are above budget by one and a half million dollars. So this is, this is really a positive thing for the general fund. Last year, we actually did not meet our mandatory fee target and what really got the general fund by were the late fees. So certainly a positive change this year so far. And we do anticipate, obviously, being over budget, well over budgeted mandatory fees. For late fees, non-compliance, which is primarily for CTAP and Rule 2.2 and some MCL E, non-compliance, that's well exceeded our budget. And this is, I think, the second year where we've received a lot of late fees that have really helped the general fund in terms of revenue, achieve its, exceed, really exceed the revenue. The next fund is Equal Access Fund. So just as a reminder, all of the grant funds, which is Equal Access Fund, Grants Fund, Legal Services Trust Fund, these are all mostly pass-through. We only keep a small portion for administrative cost reimbursements of running the grants under each of these funds, but most of them are pass-through. So for Equal Access, it is below budget by half a million dollar. And that's really just because there's some undispersed grants that have been delayed. And then there's also a small portion of admin reimbursements that we're pending to receive funding for to be able to achieve, to be able to achieve that revenue or earn that revenue. The Grants Fund is slightly above budget by about $200,000. And that's, again, because we received more grant, a little bit more grant reimbursements than we were anticipating or than we have budgeted. The Legal Services Trust Fund is over budget, also on the revenue side, by almost half a million dollars. And this, this trend has continued quarter over quarter. The Legal Services Trust Fund Commission always adopts the budget for this particular fund in terms of the daily, average daily balance and interest rates. And the actuals have continued to exceed, this is the second year where the actuals have continued to exceed the budget. And it is, a lot of, a lot of funds are in this Legal Services Trust Fund. It's all IOT, I should mention, it's IOT that's really causing the increase in revenue. And you will continue to see this trend into Q4. The Admissions Fund, it is slightly above budget by just under half a million dollar and that's because we saw a little bit more of moral character applications. I do want to just mention that in September, the September meeting, we did do a budget amendment to bring down the admissions revenue. So this revenue is now adjusted down to what we anticipate earning. And just through the third quarter, it's just a little bit over from moral character fees. And finally, the Client Security Fund, similar to the general fund, it's funded by mandatory fees. So we've also received more, more fees that are funding the Client Security Fund. And the other funds, it's over, it's over by a significant amount, it's $4.2 million over. And that's really just because of the settlement donations to the Greg Knoll Justice Gap Fund. So now I'm going to move on to the expense side. Bar-wide expenses for the quarter are just, are about four and a half million dollars below budget. And again, I'll go into all of the funds that make up that variance. Starting off, the general fund is below budget by 3.8 million, so almost just under $4 million. And there's different, different components that are accounting for the savings. First, we have reduced spending in security utilities, engineering, and repairs for general services. So that's in their building operations category. We've also continued to see savings in professional services and equipments relating to IT. Most of it is just project delays and reduced contract spend, but we will see a little bit of an uptick in Q4. And then there's some non-IT projects that have just come in under. So there's last 2201, which is our SCTC program, that has resulted in less cost than we had budgeted. We've also had some cost savings from temporary help and a little bit less travel and training than we had budgeted. All of this is really offset by, there's, I think everybody hopefully will recall that we're in the, this year, we implemented the fresh start settlement program. We haven't collected as much as we had budgeted, so there is a little bit of offset on that that I did want to highlight. The Equal Access Fund is below budget by, again, $200,000. You saw it on the revenue side, so you'll see it on the expense side as well. And this is just, like I mentioned, if we don't have the funding, we don't disperse the expense, so it's kind of a one-for-one. The Grants Fund is under budget as well by $400,000 and that's just, there's some vacant positions for the Care Corps Grant that's specifically under the Grants Fund. They just helped, because of the vacancy, there were personnel savings. The Legal Services Trust Fund and the Client Security Fund are pretty much at budget. It's only a small $100,000 variance. And finally, the Admissions Fund is under by, under in their expenses by about $200,000. And that's just really a delay of the timing of the consultant, exam consultant expenditures. We are going to incur that expense in Q4. So really, that savings is just a timing savings. And that's all I have on the Q3.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Araceli, thank you for the presentation. No comments directly related to the presentation, but I think what I would like to just engage in or just a quick discussion on is that the fiscal condition of the state bar has been a large part of our discussion over the last couple of days and represented in a number of different sort of agenda items, including the planning item for next year. I feel like we need to, the Finance Committee, along with maybe the executive team, needs to maybe spend a little bit of time working on a presentation that would more fully kind of outline the state of, the state bar's sort of overall fiscal condition and not just the way that Araceli has done it in this, in this particular presentation. And so I think we're committed to trying to make that happen. And then secondarily, if I'm not mistaken in this, this is a question. I think when I initially joined the board, there were a series of like tutorials that gave you, you know, some sense of how the board operated, its finances, those sorts of things like that. And I'm wondering if that is still the case for, for new board members, if that's a part of their sort of orientation packet. And if I remember correctly, that, I'm focused mostly on the financial, the financial ones. I think it was all kind of like an online thing.
So I can briefly address this and I would love for, if there's new trustees, I'm looking at Trustee Giorgiello, if he'd like to dive in. I don't think so in the way that you are describing it, Arnie, or Trustee Soel, excuse me. I think that there are online education-type courses that we ask all trustees to take on different things related to conflicts of interest, related to badly keen, a lot of the governance of this, of the Board of Trustees. But there has not been, and we do do a high-level overview of the different facets, but not in that particular level as it relates to how the state bar is funded and those different finance, those different funding streams and resources and so forth. I will say that from time to time, we have brought to the board a more in-depth kind of overview of different components of the state bar. As you may recall, last year, we did a, a lot of discipline-related, the discipline side information that was brought, kind of a training session to the board. We've also done that in the conflict of, conflicts of interest space as well. And that's typically been part of the planning session agendas at the beginning of the year. So to the extent that that's something that the board would like to see as part of that kind of planning overview, which we've already talked about doing to some extent, I think that could be done as well.
Very good. Any other questions?
I'll move the item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
Motion by Trustee Soel, second by Vice Chair Tony. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Bonaventura?
Aye.
Good? Not present. Grande? Not present. Gore? Not present. Harrison? Not present. Huser? Not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo? Not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Araceli, let's tackle your, I think, third and last item with us today. And Justin, I think you're joining for this one. This is item 6.11, approval of advance to California Lawyer Association for 2026 fees collected by the state bar. Go ahead.
Thank you. In 2017, as we kind of discussed earlier, the sections were separated off to the California Lawyers Association. The state bar still continues to collect sections due as part of the annual fee collection. And we transmit them over to CLA minus an administrative fee. Last year, the bar moved the renewal billing cycle, what we call it, from December through January and then to February through March. So that two-month movement created a problem for CLA and a cash flow issue. And since we, they collect over 50% of their fees in these first two months, they have requested a $1 million loan from December of this year to be repaid once we collect the receipts in February of 2026. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I will answer any questions people have.
If I can add something really quick, the, the funding is not going to be for mandatory fees. There is, I believe, a statute that, that states that we should not fund, if we are going to advance this money, that it will not be for mandatory fees. And we do have other sources where we can, where we can advance the funds.
Very good. Vice Chair Tony.
I'd like to know the difference between a loan and an advance.
I'm, I think it's, I think it's really going to be an advance. That's, that's really what it is. A loan typically tends to carry some sort of interest. Obviously, we're not going to charge them an interest rate, it's really just...
I'm fine with the advance, and I think it's simpler than a loan. This was what I'm thinking, actually. It just gets deducted from what's owed later, rather than a loan, which does imply contracts and interest, and why bother?
And we have no concern about recouping the payment because we collect $6 million from them in the first two months.
We collect that money and then we will pay our, we will keep the portion we forwarded and then send them the rest.
The first million, we take deduct from what we advance them and then do the rest.
Thank you. Good explanation. Any other questions? Or do I hear a motion?
You hear a motion, Chair Cisneros.
I like that. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion by trustee Sobel, second by vice chair Tony, roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good, not present. Gore, not present. Grande, not present. Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sobel?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
With that, I believe it's appropriate to take a break for lunch. I would like to poll the trustees. We have nearly a dozen items left on our calendars. We could make this a full 30-minute lunch break, or we could make it a working lunch and come back in 15 minutes and possibly shorten our afternoon. I would be open to thoughts.
We still think we're on track to getting out of here early?
We can think all we want, but who knows what it'll be.
I'm fine with the 15-minute.
I'm looking at the screen. Do I see nods or shakes?
Yeah, I just need to run out, so I may be a few minutes late, but that could work.
All right.
Agree.
All right, it looks like we're going with the shorter option. We'll be back, it's almost quarter after, let's be back at 12:30 sharp. Thank you very much, folks.
We lost a trustee, trustee, oh, there we go, we have quorum chair.
Thank you very much. Let's go. All right, we'll be restarting our state bar Board of Trustees meeting, and we'll move into item 6.12, the proposed new rules and amendments to the state bar rules regarding grants administration and other compliance measures. And we're joined by Erica Carroll.
I'm Erica Carroll, I'm a lead program analyst with the Office of Access and Inclusion, and I'm here to present on proposed new rules and amendments to the state bar rules regarding grants administration and other compliance measures with a request for approval and adoption today. And so as you, I'm sure, know, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission is the body that administers civil legal aid grants throughout California using funds like I O T, Equal Access Fund, and other funds that flow through the state bar. The Legal Services Trust Fund Commission has been undergoing a multi-year codification process, and I'll walk through that briefly before reaching a summary of the proposed new and amended rules, and touching briefly on the commission and the board's authority regarding rule changes, and ending with the proposed resolution. So the commission has been undergoing a codification process since 2020 to update the existing state bar rules with goals of clarifying grant eligibility and compliance requirements, improving the process for everybody involved, grantees, commissioners, and staff. And major emphasis is on consolidating all the grant requirements and the governing authorities, because we have the Business and Professions Code statute and state bar rules, but we also, over the years, have several guidelines and policies that have been developed, that there's a, an effort to pull those into the rules in order to have greater clarity and transparency around the requirements. The rule development process has been robust. The commission convenes working groups on topics that come before the Rules Committee. Those working groups are comprised of commissioners themselves and staff members before bringing a proposal to the Rules Committee where presentations and discussion occur, and then going through the commission, the full commission, before being released for public comment. And throughout this process, we consult with the Office of General Counsel for a review of the rules. Stakeholder engagement is a major part of the process as well. We have a relationship with Legal Aid Association of California to provide informal feedback before a rule actually reaches the full commission, in order to provide working groups the opportunity to hear some initial feedback from the grantees who will be most impacted by the rule changes. And sometimes they make adjustments as needed. And then, of course, there are opportunities for public comment, both at the Rules Subcommittee meetings as well as the full commission. And then the, these rules have been released for a 45-day public comment period. After those rules returned from the 45-day public comment period, the commission considered feedback that was received and moved forward with no changes to the proposal. The proposed new and amended rules largely fall under fiscal standards and compliance and administration, so there have been updates to the definitions of fiscal standards, grant expenditure deductions on applications, unspent and relinquished funds, so funds that are remaining at the end of a grant period or returned during a grant period, ways of addressing audited financial statement findings if they're very serious or repetitive in nature, dealing with grant award reductions or terminations, whether those be voluntary or necessary as a compliance measure, and codifying carryover and budget modification request process that is an existing practice but is being pulled into the rule. And then there are also rules addressing internal controls, program and quality and monitoring, visit, outcome expectations. The commission, as part of its responsibility for administering civil legal aid grants, also is empowered to recommend updates and improvements to the rules. As part of that, they must go through the board for approval of these rule changes. The Business and Professions Code, section 6210.5, states that the board shall approve the commission's recommendation unless the board makes a finding in writing that the recommendation conflicts with the statutory fiduciary or legal obligation of the state bar. Both the commission, the commission doesn't believe there are any conflicts with any obligations of the state bar, and, as I mentioned at the, earlier, the Office of General Counsel has reviewed these proposed rules and confirmed that there are no identified conflicts. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions, otherwise the proposed resolution is on your screen.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I move that the rules, the new rules be adopted.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you. Motion by trustee Gore, second by trustee Buena Ventura, roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Disdain.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande, not present. Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sobel?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Erica. Our next item, item 6.13, Proposed Amendments to State Bar Rules Regarding Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program and Proposed New Fee Mediation Rules. We'll be joined by Isabel Liu.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Isabel Liu, I am an attorney for the mandatory fee arbitration program, and I will be presenting item 6.13. So for background, these proposed rule amendments were last before this board during the September meeting, and they were approved for a public comment period of 30 days. In summary, the proposed rule amendments have three goals. First, to further increase the efficiency of the fee arbitration program procedures. Second, to add a new fee mediation offering, and this is in furtherance of the diversion program, to assist the Office of Chief Trial Counsel in diverting attorney misconduct complaints that are in fact fee disputes, and freeing up their resources to focus on complaints more likely to result in discipline. And lastly, to implement corresponding edits to the schedule of charges and deadlines, including a restructured filing fee refund schedule designed to encourage the use of the new fee mediation offering, and also adding a new fee mediator compensation rate. So now turning to the public comments that we received. During the public comment period, commenters had the opportunity to provide input on 26 proposals, and in total, we received 14 complete or partially complete comments, three of which were non-responsive to the substantive rule amendments. You'll find these public comments organized in the 26 charts attached to the staff report. Next, I'd like to briefly discuss the substantive comments received. We received one comment concerning mediation confidentiality. And upon further review, it appears that the commenter was actually addressing language in state bar model rule six, and not actually the proposed fee mediation rule language, which is drafted in a way to state that the, to state that the mediation agreement can only be used in state bar enforcement of that agreement. So the proposed rule does address the ambiguity raised by the public commenter. Next, we had a public comment regarding the duration of the mediation, where the commenter expressed concern that four hours was not enough time. The proposed fee medi, proposed fee mediation rules do address this concern, because it allows the parties to agree to an additional mediation session of up to four hours, which would bring the total mediation time to eight hours. And finally, we received two comments expressing concern that fee mediators will be volunteers. So presently, all fee arbitrators for the state bar and local bar associations, as well as fee mediators for local bar associations, are all volunteers. And the current fee arbitration rules allow for optional arbitrator compensation, and the proposed new rules for fee mediator, fee mediation also offer a optional fee mediator compensation. So that is meant to address the challenges of relying on volunteers for both programs. So based on the public comments received, staff recommends adoption of the rule amendments as circulated with an effective date of January 1st, 2026. I'm happy to answer any questions about the rule amendments or the program in general.
Are there any questions? We're open to a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Buena Ventura, second by trustee Gore, roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande, not present. Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sobel?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With nine ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Isabel.
Thank you.
Next is 6.14, Proposed Amendment to State Bar Rule 3.114 Regarding Specialty Education Non-Compliance Fees for Legal Specialists Returning From Public Comment and Request for Adoption, and we're joined by Mia Ellis. Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cisneros, members of the board, and Mia Ellis, Deputy Special Counsel for the Division of Regulation. This is a return from public comment on proposed amendments to state bar rule 3.114, allowing for a non-compliance fee for legal specialists for late compliance with their education reporting. Just as a reminder, once certified, legal specialists must maintain their certification by recertifying every five years, paying an, excuse me, paying an annual fee and reporting compliance of the education requirements every three years, which is due at the same time as their regular MCLE reporting. Proposed amendments to rule 3.114 were posted for a 30-day public comment period, and current legal specialists were also notified of the public comment opportunity. During the public comment period, 63 people completed the survey and took a position on the proposed rules. The majority of the participants, 44, disagreed with the proposed amendments, nine agreed with the proposal, specifically noting that thought a, it was a reasonable non-compliance fee. Eight agreed with the proposal, but only if modified. I'll note that some identified that they would like to know what the fee is and that it should be advertised, which it would be in the schedule of charges and deadlines. While staff does not recommend changing the proposed amendments to rule 3.114, I'd like to address some of the public comments. The additional funds generated by the proposed non-compliance fee for late reporting would address and offset the cost of staff time, but also support the legal specialization program. During the annual renewal cycle, staff sends initial and reminder notices regarding education compliance both before and after the deadlines. Any requirements and deadlines are also posted on the state bar website on the legal specialization page. I'll also note that each renewal cycle, staff evaluates the appropriate timing of these notices. We also recognize that licensees are also receiving notices about their regular requirements for the annual renewal cycle. And since this would be a new fee, we would also include it in the January newsletter for, that goes to, specifically for legal specialist. At this point, we have, there's a, notices on potential late fee that could also go in the all-licensing newsletter, which is due to go out in December. At this time, we request the board approve and adopt amendments to rule 3.114 of the rules of state bar as set forth in Attachment A. I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? So moved? Motion by trustee Stevens, second by trustee Gore, roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Because of my status as a specialist, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Good.
Aye.
Gore.
Aye.
Grande not present, Harrison not present, Huser not present, Giorgiello.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo not present, Cisneros.
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mia.
Thank you.
Next is item 6.15, Request for Retroactive Approval of Changes to the Law, Corporation, and Limited Liability Partnership Annual Registration Deadlines. We're being joined by Steve Moed. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you. This item is, as you mentioned, retroactive approval of the change in deadlines. As you know, we've been implementing a new system to permit electronic submission of law corporation and limited liability partnership initial and renewal applications. Unfortunately, once the renewal cycle opened, there were some issues that either prevented those law corps and LLPs from submitting their renewal applications, or at a minimum, were confusing. While we are getting close to resolving any remaining issues to ensure that LCs and LLPs were not penalized for late submissions because of those technical issues, and to ensure that they have at least two full months to submit their renewals, the 2025 deadlines for both LLP and law corp were extended to January 30 of 2026 for the late fee, and May 29, 2026, which is the suspension deadline. So if the applications aren't submitted with the late fee and the original renewal fee by that final deadline, they would be suspended after that date. This request is for retroactive approval of that extension. And finally, I do just want to point out that while it is not up for a decision today, as I mentioned in the staff report, I anticipate bringing a rule or policy proposal to the Board sometime in 2026 that would, if adopted, allow staff some discretion to modify regulatory deadlines without advanced or retroactive approval from the Board in some circumstances.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Vice Chair Tony.
I think I understand the principle of this, and it has to do with waiving late fees. Right?
Yes, it's waiving it for a certain period of time.
For a certain period of time?
Yes.
And there's a table here. Is that Table 2? Here's the thing. The resolution refers to the table on Page 2. I think that's what I'm looking at then, right? So, with these dates, that means it'll be suspended until, for these things, for one category, January 30, and one for May 29, right?
Yes, but, I apologize. I just tried to click on the item, and it says I'm not authorized to view it, which is ironic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you created it.
But, there, ah, thank you.
Has your name on it, anyway.
It does, it does. And I did write it. Yes. So, the law corporations, the initial deadline, after which a late fee would be imposed, is January 30, and for limited liability partnerships, the same date, January 30. And then that final deadline, the one that I mentioned, if people have not submitted the renewal fee, the application, and the late fee by that date thereafter, they would be suspended. That's that final deadline.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. I'm fine with it. I appreciate the clarification. I'm fine with it. It makes sense to not penalize people because of some of the timing issues. I think it's the right thing to do.
All right. Any other questions? Or do I hear a motion?
I'm willing to move the item.
Motion by Vice Chair Tony. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Verahona. Roll call vote.
Verahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Good.
Obstain.
Gore.
Aye.
Grande not present, Harrison, excuse me, Harrison not present, Huser not present, Giorgiello.
Obstain.
Soell.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo not present, Cisneros.
Aye.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Back to you, sir.
Great.
Next is the Proposed Amendments to the Rules of Court and the State Bar Rules Regarding the Procedure Upon Suspension for Non-Payment, which involves amended California Rules of Court Rules 9.8 and 9.22, and amended State Bar Rules Rules 2.33, 2.34. We'll stick with you, Steve.
Thank you. This item is about changing the way that we do non-payment suspensions, and by that, I mean non-payment of annual licensing fees, and also non-payment of court-ordered child and family support obligations. Initially, the payment of annual licensing fees was really the only requirement for lawyers before MCLE. And at the time, the Supreme Court was involved in all suspensions for non-payment, and this was codified into State Bar Rule 2.3. There's no rule of court that requires the Supreme Court to be involved in that, but it was written into 2.3. Later, additional reporting requirements or annual renewal cycle requirements were added to the requirements that lawyers have to do, including the MCLE, Minimum Continuing Legal Education, the Client Trust Account Protection Program, CTAP, the Attorney Record Verification in Rule 2.2, et cetera. And the Supreme Court is not involved in any of the inactive enrollments that occur as a result of violations of those rules. And soon, we're going to be adding the civility oath to that list as well, and the Supreme Court won't be involved in any actions taken against licensees as a result of failure to comply with those rules. The State Bar staff has been and will be able to involuntarily enroll them without an order from the Supreme Court. That's not the way that our non-payment of license fees and non-payment of court-ordered child and family support is under the Rules of Court and the Rules of the State Bar. These processes require orders from the Supreme Court, which means that my team and the Supreme Court need to coordinate, communicate, and send petitions back and forth several times a year for annual licensing fees. It was, in theory, once. Now, we have a second time, because we have the installment payment program, which the Supreme Court also needs to weigh in on to allow us to suspend people as a result of non-payment of that. And then with the child and family support, that's 14-plus times per year that we have to send a petition to the Supreme Court in order to take action against those licenses, and that action is really guided by statute as well. In addition to those 14 petitions for the non-payment of court-ordered child support and family support, anytime that somebody is removed from the delinquent list from the Department of Child Support Services, we then have to go back to the court to get them to essentially allow us to remove them or to reinstate them. And so, those are one-off petitions, so we could get dozens more of those petitions. And so, in essence, this is trying to, in recognition of the State Bar being a smaller organization and more nimble, we're trying to streamline the process for these two things. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Yes.
This is an area I don't know a lot about. So, first, very basic question. The administrative suspension for failure to pay family support, that's a statute, right? That's what I understand, so I'm not going to discuss the merits of that. And is, I understand the efficiency of this proposal. I know we're just voting to send it out for comment, but just in terms of the content of it, is, do we have an indication of what the Supreme Court's position is on this?
We don't have anything official. I know that it was on our list of automate, innovate, and stop. That one doesn't rhyme, but there's another word that does somewhere. But it was on our list of that. I believe those were discussed with the Supreme Court, and we were told that it was okay to move this forward, but I don't know.
Okay.
Not privy to those discussions.
I'm, you know, we just discussed yesterday at a meeting proposals, motions that we had sent to the Supreme Court that were rejected or denied. And I would like an indication, and maybe it's part of what can happen during the 45-day, is just an indication that this wouldn't be something that, some indication that they're open to it, you know? And it's, you know, because it does have to do with their authority. That's why I'm bringing it up. It does change their authority, and they can decide they're okay with that, or they can decide they still want it. I mean, they decided on the expungements, they still want it. So, that's my only comment here. I'm certainly in favor of sending this out.
Did I hear a motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Motion by Vice Chair Tony, second by trustee Buena Ventura, roll call vote, please.
Verahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Gore.
Aye.
Grande not present, Harrison not present, Huser not present, Giorgiello.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo not present, Cisneros.
Aye.
With nine ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
And continuing, Steve. Item 6.17, Discussion Regarding Implementation of Supreme Court Order on Civility and Proposed New Rule 2.3 of the State Bar Rules Regarding the Civility Oath. Request to circulate for public comment. Steve, you're continuing with us and being joined by Catherine?
Yes. Hopefully, she'll be joining us shortly.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for joining me. I'll start, and I will turn it over to Kathy. So, this item requests adoption of an interim Rule 2.3 and permission to circulate for public comment, the same rule, to be returned for consideration of adoption as permanent. The changes to 2.3 were the result of changes that the Supreme Court made to Rule of Court 9.7 from the time that it was set to them, approved by the Board and sent to them, I believe in 2023. They made some changes and then adopted a different version of 9.7. 2.3 was adopted by this Board at the same time that 9.7 was sent to the Supreme Court, but it was adopted assuming no material changes to 9.7 occurred. Material changes did occur, and so that's why we're back here today. So we made a number of changes that I detail in the item, and I don't necessarily need to discuss here, to conform 2.3 to the new 9.7, the 9.7 version that was adopted. They include, for example, the elimination of the difference between a one-time civility oath and the requirement to annually reaffirm the civility oath, which is just sort of a different framework previously. So we've made a number of changes along those lines. We've tried to make some changes to make this process more similar to the other inactive enrollment processes for other reporting requirements, and things along those lines. This item also calls for a discussion regarding implementation of the Supreme Court's order on civility and the Supreme Court's rejection of proposed amendments. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Anguri from our Office of Professional Competence.
Thank you, Steve. And so, in September 2025, the Supreme Court did approve the amendments to Rule 9.7 governing the attorney oath. However, they declined to adopt the proposed amendments to Rule 1.2 and 8.4, or the new proposed Rule 8.4.2. And so, those changes would have made incivility a disciplinable offense, and it was defined as significantly unprofessional conduct that is abusing or harassing. And so, while the Court commended our efforts to promote civility, it did cite vagueness and First Amendment concerns, and instead encouraged us to take a different approach. So specifically, they asked us to consider codifying case law that reduced attorney fees based on incivility, and to study the effects of the new civility-focused MCLE requirement. So in response to this, the Office of Professional Competence, working with the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, our Office of Chief Trial Counsel, and our Office of Research and Statistics, is implementing the Court's direction through rule review, education, and data analysis. So we've already met with COPRAC and the representatives from the California Civility Task Force to discuss the next steps. And this is going to include reexamining existing case law and exploring options to integrate those principles into future rule development. So at the same time, OPC is leading the development of a modernized civility toolkit to update the civility toolbox that contains attorney guidelines of civility and professionalism, and to really embed the civility principles into our continuing education. So we will be working with stakeholders to ensure that it is comprehensive, and we're going to bring it to this Board next year for approval. So together, we really think that these efforts will help advance the Court's vision of promoting civility through education, evidence-based evaluation, and sustain cultural change within the legal profession. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions? Yes, in San Francisco.
Oh, I was just going to move it. We needed to move it.
I have a question.
Okay.
So here's my question. If the Supreme Court reviewed, approved part of it and not part of it, of the civility oath, the motion, I don't understand what's the emergency that we have to, you know, that anybody feels compelled to adopt an emergency order. I'm like, why not wait until the comments come back, one? And in terms of the rules, how do we know that the rules that is being proposed to adopt on an emergency basis will be approved by the Supreme Court? I'm a little bit like, I don't see the emergency.
If I may, so the rule that this Board would adopt, Rule 2.3, that you may adopt on an interim basis and may send out for public comment, does not need to be approved by the Supreme Court? So that, they just approve the rules of court and some, the rules of professional conduct, and some rules of the State Bar, but not this one. There's no requirement they approve that. This rule is written to conform to 9.7, but 9.7 is really the authorizing rule that authorizes the State Bar to, in essence, make rules to make it happen. And then this is the rule that would make it happen. Part of 9.7 includes that we establish this process by April of 2026, April 1, 2026. And so, in order to do that, to accomplish that goal, we need to have a rule in place to govern that process. In addition, I mean, conceivably, we could send it out now and come back in January, but even then, that's, in theory, before the renewal cycle opens. But we do a lot of work before the renewal cycle opens to prepare our licensees for it, including sending out letters to the 9.9 exempt people who don't do their work online, and sending out other things to the licensee population in general, letting them know what their requirements are, et cetera. And so, that work would be done before we could get any comment back from people.
Okay, so if I follow you, you're saying that... Okay, so if I follow you, you're saying that the, what we're voting on today is not the section that the Supreme Court denied. When and how are we going to address that section? It's not in here?
So?
Another process?
Yes, I'm sorry. If you're talking about Kathy's portion, about the rules of professional conduct, yes, I'll let Kathy address that, but that's a different issue.
Yeah, so in terms of the rules of professional conduct, what we're going to do is, we are going to be working with our stakeholders to really follow the Supreme Court's direction, to think about how we might codify existing case law into the rules. And so we anticipate that process will take probably at least a year before we're ready to bring it back to this body.
Erica?
Yeah. So I think it may be helpful to remind the trustees and explain to some of the relatively newer trustees kind of where this all started. So this Board approved proposed amendments to California Rule of Court 9.7, which is required to be approved by the Supreme Court back in 2023. With that, this Board approved tentatively State Bar Rule 2.3, which would have implemented Rule 9.7. It was approved with the thought that it would only go into effect if Rule 9.7 was not substantively changed by the California Supreme Court. As Steve just described, it was substantively changed by the California Supreme Court, which requires Rule 2.3 to come back to this Board. Because the Supreme Court did a lot of edits to Rule 9.7, we need to make parallel changes to Rule 2.3. And because it's a state bar rule that does not require Supreme Court approval, there is authorization within the other state bar rules for this to go down two paths. One is adoption of an interim rule that can only be valid for 120 days. At the same time, you would be issuing the exact same rule for a public comment period to allow for permanent adoption. And as Steve described, we are recommending an interim rule now so that this can be communicated appropriately to licensees in advance of the billing cycle, during which the Supreme Court has ordered that licensees must complete this oath. Does that help?
It's very confusing to me that the Supreme Court would have an expectation of such quick action when their action was so recent. They did have two years to respond, and they can take as long as they want, that is their prerogative. But I also think that when they, you know, that we also have some responsibility to do it in the right way, and I'd rather wait until we have the issues that they brought up resolved before we vote to adopt it. But that's my preference. Other people don't have to have that preference. I'm just stating mine.
And just to be clear, the issue on 2.3, which is the requirement that licensees reaffirm their civility oath every year, or actually retake the entire oath every year, is separate and apart from the rules of professional conduct that the Supreme Court rejected changes to. So that's, they can proceed on two independent tracks.
But isn't that what they're taking the oath on? Complying with the professional rules? No?
No.
Okay, then that's why I'm confused.
So the oath is twofold. It is one thing that is required by statute, which is to declare your support to the U.S. Constitution and the California Constitution. In addition to that, what Rule 9.7 does is adds a civility component to the oath, which is you will strive to conduct yourself with, I'm going to miss the words because I do every time, dignity, courtesy, and integrity, I believe. And so that is there. Separate and apart from that, all lawyers are required to adhere to the rules of professional conduct and the State Bar Act and otherwise comply with law. So these are kind of two distinct things.
Okay, any other questions? San Francisco?
Yeah, I appreciate Trustee Tony's perspective on it, and I was having difficulty following the conversation myself. So it wasn't, it was confusing. One thing that I, two points I wanted to make. One is civility in the profession is a real hot-button issue right now, and so I think that's why it urges adoption immediately. Two is that as a practical matter, and maybe this wasn't apparent from the presentation, licensees typically log into their state bar profile before renewal to pay their fees. Also, if they're up for MCL education compliance, they certify their compliance with the MCL requirements, that they've done their X number of hours in certain areas at the same time. And so I think practically speaking, to adopt it now permits that to happen as part of that process when 190,000 attorneys log in within the next couple of months, which is why, I think, is the purpose for the interim rule. So I just wanted to give that context, which I don't think was clear. So I do support this interim rule, because I think it is important, and I think as a practical matter, it's our best shot at getting it done, you know, within the next cycle and not waiting a whole other year. Thank you.
Trustee Good, thank you.
So with that, Trustee Good, your motion is still in effect?
Yes, I'll make the motion. Yes.
Thank you. I'll need a second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Good, second by Trustee Gore. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande not present, Harrison not present, Huser not present, Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens not present, Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present, Sisneros?
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. On to 6.18, Proposed Amendment to the State Bar Rules Relating to the Lawyer Referral Services, Title III, Division 5, Chapter 3. Kathy, you're presenting?
Yes, and I'll be joined by Elizabeth Halm.
Thank you.
Okay, is Elizabeth there? There she is. Great. Okay, so these proposed revisions to the Lawyer Referral Services rule implement Business and Professions Code, Section 6155. And that section authorizes partnerships between certified lawyer referral services and nonprofit organizations. And so these changes took effect January 1, 2025, and require the state bar to set minimums for these partnerships. And so the purpose is pretty straightforward. It's to make it easier for trusted nonprofits like legal aid and community-based organizations to connect the public with qualified, insured attorneys through the certified LRSs. This supports our access to justice mission while maintaining public protection and oversight. So now I'll turn it over to Elizabeth to talk a little bit about our stakeholder consultation.
Thanks, Kathy. Good afternoon, trustees. In developing these revisions, we conducted an extensive stakeholder engagement process with lawyer referral service directors, bar associations, and access to justice partners statewide. We also worked closely with the California Access to Justice Commission, which helped us gather broad stakeholder input through interviews and surveys. Their findings helped us shape the rules to be flexible, practical, and consistent with LRS operations. So what's new with the rules revisions? We've added Article 3, which establishes a clear, low-burden framework for LRS nonprofit partnerships. Rule 3.830 defines why these partnerships are allowed and what nonprofits may do. And this includes promoting lawyer referral services, educating the public about lawyers, conducting or coordinating client intake with an LRS, and providing navigation services, such as helping the client connect with the partner lawyer referral service or LRS-referred lawyer. Rule 3.831 confirms that the LRS remains fully responsible for compliance and public protection with these partnerships, and Rules 3.832 and 3.833 introduces a simple notice-based procedure to establish the partnership with no additional certification required.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going to stay the same. All the core consumer protections remain in place, and that includes lawyer screening, insurance requirements, complaint review, and due process for revocations. So the changes really modernize the rules without shifting regulatory responsibility or adding new burdens. And as mentioned during the earlier planning session, we did include some clarification around the complaint process. And so in terms of the changes, we updated the definition section to give clearer, more precise terms to describe the relationship between the LRSs and the nonprofits. And these definitions help to distinguish what activities fall within the partnership and ensure that everybody understands their roles and the limits of each entity. We also streamlined certification and recertification provisions. And so those revisions really simplify the application and renewal process by removing unnecessary administrative steps and aligning the rules with the current practices. And so this is going, we hope this reduces the burden on LRSs while maintaining the level of review necessary for public protection. We also provided clauses to modernize notice, record-keeping, reporting, and technology standards. And so the rules reflect how LRSs operate today by incorporating electronic notice, updated reporting timelines, and expectations around the use of technology in referrals. We think these updates will help support accuracy, efficiency, and accountability in service delivery. We also reinforced the LRS's responsibility for compliance and consumer protection. And as Elizabeth mentioned, the LRSs remain accountable for compliance with all the rules. And what we hope this does is creates a single point of responsibility to safeguard consumers and to maintain consistent public protection standards. We also improved clarity around the referrals and marketing standards. And so we clarified what constitutes a referral, the limits on nonprofit activities, and the marketing requirements for LRSs and their partners. And we hope that this ensures consistent public disclosure and compliance with our rules of professional conduct. And then finally, we relaxed multi-county restrictions to address geographic access gaps. And so the updated rules allow attorneys to serve clients in more than one geographic area if they are able and willing to do so. So we hope this change responds to the attorney shortage in certain regions and increases access for Californians statewide. So in short, what we really hope is that these revisions deliver what the statute requires while reflecting broad stakeholder support. They expand access to affordable legal help, strengthen partnerships with trusted nonprofits, and preserve public protection in every step. And so just finally, in terms of the big-picture impact and the next steps, the proposed amendments will simplify these partnerships, increase access to qualified, affordable attorneys, and still maintaining that public oversight. So what we're requesting today is that the Board approve the rules and release them for public comment, and we will continue our outreach to lawyer referral services. And we are happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from trustees? Yes, in San Francisco.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth and Kathy, for the excellent presentation. I'm all in favor of this, and quite frankly, you know, getting nonprofit organizations better aligned to provide legal services to the tons of people who need it these days. So if there aren't any other questions, I'll make a motion.
Excellent. Any other questions, or do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Good, second by Trustee Barahona. Roll call vote.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande not present, Harrison not... Hi, Trustee Grande.
Epstein.
Harrison not present, Huser not present, Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens not present, Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present, Sisneros?
Aye.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
I apologize. I missed... Trustee Gore, Trustee Gore. So with eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Next is 6.19, Proposed Amendments to Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding Comments by Lawyers That Could Prejudice Judicial Proceedings or Endanger Judicial Officers or Court Personnel. Kathy, you're still with us, and we're joined by Rachel.
Okay, so just as a kind of a reminder about this proposal, this proposal came back from public comment following both a 60-day period and a 45-period. And what these amendments really do is they aim to clarify when attorney statements about judges and judicial proceedings fall outside of constitutional protections and may be subject to discipline. I do want to note that these changes respond directly to rising threats against judicial officers and concerns that were raised specifically by the California Judges Association. And so we did receive that formal request back in November 2024. In March 2025, COPRAC issued an ethics alert and later advanced these rule amendments to more clearly define false or reckless statements that endanger judicial officers or prejudice judicial proceedings. And so just in terms of the background, here are some of the stats that supported this request. And just in terms of what the amendments are going to do, for 8.2, it clarifies that statements framed as opinion can be disappplied when they imply verified false facts, may knowingly or with reckless disregard, excuse me. And then Rule 8.4, it adds guidance in Comment 7, explaining the categories of unprotected speech that might be subject to discipline, including threats, incitement, and false factual claims about judges. Now, these amendments do not restrict constitutionally protected speech. They target unprotected statements that pose a real risk to judicial integrity and safety. And just in terms of the engagement that we received at the public comment stage, the support was mixed, but no commenter raised any substantive concerns about the text of the amendment. There were three that agreed, two agreed with modifications, one opposed, and two had no positions. And so we also did make a minor typographical area to change, excuse me, to the citations, but there were no further revisions done. So at this time, we are recommending that the Board adopt the proposed amendments and direct staff to submit them to the California Supreme Court for final approval. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion? Yes, Trustee Good?
Actually, so Kathy, what is the definition of judicial officer? Does it include, for example, administrative law judges, state bar judges, you know, all federal and state, you know, superior court judges? I just wondered.
Yeah, just give me one second. Okay, so for purposes of this rule, it has, a judge and judicial officer have the same meaning as in Rule 3.5(c). And so let me just pull Rule 3.5(c) really quick and tell you what that includes. Okay, and so in terms of the rules of professional conduct, it is under Rule 3.5(c), and it includes administrative law judges, neutral arbitrators, state court judges, and members of an administrative body acting in an adjudicative capacity, and law clerks, research attorneys, or other court personnel who participate in the decision-making process, including referees, special masters, or other persons to whom the court refers, one or more issues and whose decisions or recommendations can be binding on the parties if approved by the court. So in short, it does cover all those categories that you mentioned.
Excellent, it's very broad. That's great. This is a really concerning issue across this country. I am happy to make the motion if there are no other questions.
See, Good, I, I do have just one, one question, and that is, embodied in anything that we're amending right now, does it, is there, are there any changes in, and sort of enforcement or punishment sort of proceedings as it results, as, as it results to these, these changes?
Well, what the amendments do, it really kind of clarifies what case law has already been built around these issues and what has withstood First Amendment challenges. So it doesn't necessarily change things, it really just strengthens our ability to discipline for these types of offenses.
Thank you, and I, I'm happy to second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Soel. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stevens, not present. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With nine ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Next is 6.20, Proposed Amendments to the Rule 7.3 of the Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding Solicitation of Clients in Return from Public Comment. Kathy, once again. Or Rachel?
Yes, hello, good afternoon. I am Rachel Brewer, Managing Attorney with the Office of Professional Competence, and I am here to request that the board adopt and submit the proposed amendments to California Rules of Professional Conduct, Rule 7.3, to the California Supreme Court. So just to provide some context, this proposal originated from public comment that the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, or COPRAC, received regarding pre-service solicitation of respondents in domestic violence restraining order matters. This pre-service solicitation may jeopardize the safety of petitioners, children, law enforcement officers serving the orders, and it may also allow respondents to evade service and undermine the petitioner's trust in the legal system. So this proposal would add, sorry, this proposal would add subsection F, which prohibits that pre-service solicitation in domestic violence restraining orders, and would also add Comment 5, which explains the policy rationale for this proposal. We did receive 28 written comments during this public comment period. The large majority supported the proposal. Those opposed raised right to counsel and constitutional concerns. COPRAC also received similar comments during their public comment period, and both of those issues were considered during COPRAC's deliberations. I would specifically like to address the comment from FlexCom yesterday, from yesterday morning. I just want to clarify that the current proposal includes a narrow exception that does allow, allow family law practitioners to notify current clients of the existence of a domestic violence restraining order and offer representation pre-service. It would prohibit those family law practitioners from reaching out to alert former clients of the existence of a domestic violence order, restraining order pre-service. FlexCom raised these concerns in their first public comment letter, which was submitted to COPRAC. And so COPRAC did consider their public comment and added clarifying language to allow practitioners to reach out to current clients, because it was not COPRAC's intention for these amendments to 7.3 to conflict with Rule 1.4. And Rule 1.4 requires a lawyer to keep the client reasonably informed about significant developments related to the representation. So for that reason, COPRAC added a clause to Propose Comment 5, clarifying that these amendments to Rule 7.3 would, quote, "not alter a lawyer's rights or duties under 1.4." COPRAC did not create a similar exception for former clients in an effort to balance the competing interests raised during this process. And we believe that the amendments to Rule 7.3 as drafted strike an appropriate balance among those interests, and therefore we are not recommending further revisions. And with that, I am requesting that the board approve adoption and direct staff to submit this matter to the California Supreme Court. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions from trustees? Go ahead, vice chair.
I absolutely support this measure. I want to contrast the difference in, I, I had suggested at the September meeting that we adopt this on an emergency level, an emergency measure. And the advice that I got was we couldn't do that. And I just want to say for the record, I'm very unhappy with that. I, you know, this is the kind of thing, public, where public safety is at stake, that we should, when brought to our attention by one of our committees, with public comment already given, we, we should have sent this last meeting to the Supreme Court. No good reason to have waited.
Any other comments? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Giorgiello. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura? Not present. Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser, not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stevens, not present. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With eight ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. And that, I believe, completes our open calendar agenda. We'll now be moving into closed session. In pursuant to Government Code, Section 11126, subdivisions A1, C2. Thank you very much, folks. Do we have an estimate on how long we'll be in closed? Guessing between one and two hours? Somewhere between one and two hours. I don't think we have any more open agenda items left, so we'll be coming out at that time from closed session and reporting anything that needs to be reported if there is anything. With that, we'll see the trustees in the closed session, Zoom. Thank you very much.
Five and recording.
Thank you very much. The Board of Trustees has completed our closed session. The closed session had no reportable items. With that, we have completed the entire agenda for this board meeting, and with that, this board meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.